The March ninth, twenty twenty one, meaning of the Stowe Board of Selectmen. With me here in person today, I have Jim Selby and Megan Birch-McMichael, as well as our county administrator Denise Dimkoski. And virtually, we have members Courtney Freischer and Ellen Sturgis. And we'll start with public input. If anybody has public input on something that is not on the agenda, please either raise your virtual hand to be recognized or try to wave at me.
Chair on the chat. It's Ellen.
Oh.
I'm not seeing anybody, so we will move on to the chairman's comments. First off, I'd like to welcome Ms. Joyce Sampson to the County of Stowe. Joyce started as the county administrator, Board of Selectmen Executive Assistant on Monday, March first, and she will be a valued addition to the team. Joyce, I don't know if you're on here and you can see us or not, but if you'd like to say hello.
I'm here. Hello, thank you.
Hello, Joyce.
Hi Joyce.
Hi Joyce.
Welcome to Stowe.
Thank you very much.
Next up, oh, let's see. If you've ever had a desire to stuff a cruiser full of food, the police department, along with the Neshova Rotary Club, are inviting residents to participate in a Stuff a Cruiser Food Drive from eleven AM to two PM on Saturday, March twenty seventh. Stowe residents can take donations to the Lower Village Commons by the Stowe Plaza, and the town that receives the most donations will be recognized for its achievement. This is actually also in conjunction with the Fulton and Lancaster Police Departments who are running their own. Nomination papers for the May Annual Town Election are still available up until March seventeenth from the town clerk. Papers are due back to the town clerk by five PM on March nineteenth. I think the town clerk also mailed out the census to everybody in Stowe. If you haven't sent it back in, please send your census forms back in. Lastly, it's hard to believe that one year ago this week, COVID arrived and started to create havoc, resulting in lockdowns, general mayhem, as well as many tragic deaths around the world. While we're not quite out of the woods yet, we are making progress and hopefully the end is in sight. Please keep up with your precautions and hopefully we'll end this pandemic as soon as possible. I'd like to take this time also to thank, on behalf of the board and myself, all of the essential workers, doctors, nurses, grocery store workers, as well as all of our town employees and residents that have kept things going for the past year. Thank you all. And moving on. Next up, we have a few appointments. We have Meredith Wood, who has put in for the Cultural Council for a term ending March ninth, twenty twenty four. Meredith, are you on?
Yes, she is not. She had a conflict with her job this evening.
Okay. Well, in that case, you know, it has been duly posted and Meredith has expressed interest in this. And Denise has spoken to Meredith. Are there any questions from the board regarding this appointment?
If I could just, having been on the Cultural Council many years ago, one of the first things I volunteered for, I'm thrilled to see that not only is Meredith raising her hand, but she's only lived in town a couple of years and is probably a non-artistic, but an arts enthusiast. And I think it's really important to have someone like that on the Cultural Council because, you know, we all have different things we bring to it and I think it's great that she's willing to step up. So, thank you, Meredith.
I just wanted to add, I like her experience in the nonprofit sector. And Ellen mentioned her statement that she personally aligns any artistic or musical talent. I can certainly relate to that. But I would tell her not to give up. And I think that she will make a great Cultural Council member.
In that case, I am willing to accept a motion at this point.
Mr. Chair, I move to appoint Meredith Wood to the Stowe Cultural Council for a three-year term expiring March ninth, twenty twenty four.
Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
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 And Ellen and Courtney vote aye. So, thank you, Meredith, for stepping forward. It's much appreciated. Next, we have Rebecca Lynch, who has also volunteered to be on the Cultural Council through March ninth, twenty twenty four.
And Rebecca is on the call.
And Rebecca.
Hi.
Hello.
Hello.
Thank you for stepping forward.
Oh, my gosh. My pleasure.
So, would you like to tell us a little bit about yourself and why you're interested in the Cultural Council?
Sure. I'm a nonprofit professional and a freelance writer and also a musician. So, last summer, when all of our gigs were canceled because of the pandemic, we kind of reworked everything and started hosting outdoor concerts here in the neighborhood. And I feel very strongly about the importance of the arts and want to support them in town. I'm relatively new in town, moved here in two thousand fourteen, so I'd love to get involved in the town a little bit more and also promote the arts.
Thank you for stepping forward.
Yeah.
Are there questions or comments from the board?
No, I'm gonna come to your concert, I think. I was very excited to hear about that. I know exactly where you live. That's so cool.
Oh, my gosh. That's great.
That's so great. That's awesome.
So, you've been stalking her?
No, I was walking in the neighborhood.
Her address is here.
Her address is there.
All right. If I could just add, I thought, Rebecca, I thought that your letter was not only entertaining, but very heartfelt and gave me a very good idea of who you are as a person. I have absolutely no questions and I'm sure you're gonna be a very good member of the Cultural Council.
Oh, well, I'm delighted to serve, you know. And please, I will invite all of you to come down to Fifty Timberstone and because we will be doing it again this year and we're taking in sponsorships and everything. But looking to grow it without annoying the neighbors.
Well, if you invite all the neighbors, then hopefully nobody's gonna complain then.
You know, they have, I don't know, many come. And the great thing about it is, you know, we have, as a band that plays clubs and restaurants, that's a certain age demographic, but when it comes to the neighborhood, we get the kids.
Yeah.
And that's wonderful, you know? These kids get to see live music and it's a lot of fun. So, I would be delighted to be part of it.
Yep. Well, teach them about rock and roll.
Okay.
Mr. Chair, are you ready for a motion?
Ellen, Courtney, any comments, questions?
I just was gonna say the same thing. Just let us know when the concerts are. I've been dying for live music. Having run a live performance space for three and a half years, I cannot leave out if I never heard live music, so bring it on.
How do I reach all of you? I just shoot out something to Denise and Denise, you'll get it out there?
Absolutely. Yep, that's perfect.
Perfect.
All right. You got it.
Thanks for stepping up, Rebecca.
My pleasure. Happy to do it.
Mr. Chair, I move to appoint Rebecca Lynch to the Stowe Cultural Council for a three-year term expiring March ninth, twenty twenty four.
Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
You see Ellen and Courtney are aye.
Yes, yes.
Thank you. Thank you for stepping forward. And both, I think you do know that you'll have to talk to the town clerk and arrange to get sworn in.
We'll send out an appointment letter with all the details.
Whatever it takes. Thank you.
Right. Thank you. Next up, we have another appointment. And this is to appoint Dave Gogan as an acting sergeant on the police department. And at this point, I will turn this over to Chief Solisi.
Hello.
What a mic.
This is like becoming every meeting thing going in front of you guys. So, well, last time or a couple of times ago, Darren was promoted to lieutenant, so we have no sergeants right now. Currently, what we are planning on doing within the police department is doing a promotional process, but that takes time to develop and get approved. So, in the meantime, we are lacking to supervise our positions. Over the past year, Darren and I have been able to answer questions that come from officers regarding policy regulations, which as supervisors, we do routinely. But to continue our command structure, I'd be looking to put Dave Gogan in as an acting sergeant. He has been the senior patrol officer for the past six years. He's been a police officer with the town of Stowe for thirty-two years and a police officer total for thirty-five years. He has the respect of the members of the department. He is well-versed in our policies and our procedures. And he has been able to control critical situations throughout his career. I've seen him de-escalate situations and really engage with the public. He has the ability to lead our department and lead our officers in the direction that we are going in as a department now. I've included his resume and within my letter of recommendation for him to be appointed. And as I said before, Dave has been able to de-escalate situations before. And, you know, he was involved in a use of force situation where the outcome, the person survived that outcome, but Dave was able to use what force he needed to. He has good community relations throughout his career and he's made it a point to instill the best practices of his experience to new and veteran officers. I had the opportunity to learn from Dave as a young officer. He was one of my field training officers. So, I feel very fortunate to be supporting him in his career as he supported me in mine. So, I'm requesting that Dave be appointed as acting sergeant until two permanent sergeants are appointed. This will no way give Dave a permanent position. He will still have to apply for the process if he still wants it. He'll have to work just as hard as the other candidates if he chooses to. But this will give him all the role and responsibility that he's doing now. But he'll also get some of the benefits that come along with the additional appointment. And you guys have any questions for Dave? He is on tonight.
Megan, no?
I don't have any questions. No.
No, this makes sense to me.
Yeah.
Ellen, Courtney? All right, no questions? Dave, if you'd like to say hi, since you made the effort to be on tonight.
How you doing, everybody?
Hi, Dave.
Obviously, thank you for stepping up and obviously you must have been okay and treated Mike okay, where he wants to promote you now, or at least.
I did.
So, thank you for all your service to the town.
Thank you very much.
Mr. Chair, I move to appoint Officer David Gogan as acting police sergeant for the Stowe Police Department for the remainder of a two-year term expiring on June thirtieth, twenty twenty one and subject to reappointment thereafter.
Second?
Can I actually ask that you amend that? It should be until we have two replacement sergeants.
So, should it be this language, or until we have two replacements?
Yes, that would be great.
And two replacement sergeants?
Yes.
Okay. Mr. Chair, I withdraw that motion. I move to appoint Officer David Gogan as acting police sergeant for the Stowe Police Department for the remainder of a two-year term expiring June thirtieth, twenty twenty one, subject to reappointment thereafter, or in the alternative, until the appointment of two permanent police sergeants.
Second?
All right, and one of the things to note is that Denise also supports this appointment. So, all in favor?
Aye.
Ellen? Aye. And Courtney?
Aye.
Thank you. So, it's unanimous.
Thank you.
Thanks, David.
Thank you, Chief, and thank you, David.
Thank you, David. Thank you, Mike.
Thank you. Thank you, David.
Next up on the agenda, and I think we're actually perfectly on time. Next up, we have a public hearing relating to the Honey Pot Hills Orchard, Inc. liquor license application. It's a part of a farmer's series pouring license. So, I'll read the notice that was published in the Stowe Independent on February seventeenth, twenty twenty one. Notice is hereby given under Chapter one thirty-eight of the General Laws that Honey Pot Hill Orchards, Inc., for premises located at one thirty-eight Sudbury Road. Stowe has applied for an on-premises liquor license under Section nineteen BN Farmer's Series Pouring Permit. Public hearing will be held on the license application on Tuesday, March ninth, twenty twenty one, at seven fifteen PM in the Stow Town Building, three eighty Great Road, with attendance via Zoom as the only method to participate. Could I have a motion to open the public hearing, please?
Mr. Chair, I move that the public hearing for the liquor license application for Honey Pot Hill Orchard at one thirty-eight Sudbury Road in Stowe be opened.
And this requires a roll call vote. Ellen?
Aye.
Courtney?
Aye.
Megan?
Aye.
Jim?
Aye.
And the chair votes aye, so the public hearing is now open. What I'm gonna do to begin with is I will ask the applicant to, or the petitioner, to speak on this subject. So, either Chelsea Martin or Andrew Martin, are you available to speak to this, please?
Hi, um.
Hi, Chelsea. How are you?
I'm good. How are you guys doing?
Okay. So.
I'd like to thank Denise because she was super helpful throughout the second part of this process. So, I just wanted to say publicly, thank you.
You're welcome.
All right, so would you like to explain to us what you're planning here and any pertinent information that people might find either interesting or pertinent to this situation?
So, we're just planning to do basically the same thing we've done the last two years. We've done a cider tent. We're applying for the pour permit for just that cider tent area. So, it's by our lot B parking lot. It's essentially the same, the exact same setup. It's just pouring on-site. Our plan is to do it, we did it weekends during the fall of the last two years. It was really popular. We're hoping getting the pour permit will mean that we can do a summer series more for the people of Stowe. And I just looked up Rebecca's band, which sounds super. So, we're trying to do something, we're hoping to try and make this something that can be more for the town and less for the people who come here to pick apples during the fall. Although that is great for us. Our neighbors were walking to it the last couple of years and it was just really fun. So, we're hoping to keep that going. I sent out more of butters than I had to, just because in the future, we don't know if this is gonna be wildly successful, but we're planning to just start small, do the same thing we've done before because that worked well for us. We're planning to keep, as far as I know, I haven't talked to the police chief. Hi, Chief Solisi. But we're just planning on keeping all the same, congratulations, by the way, all the same stuff that we talked about before, a two-drink maximum. We're not planning on becoming a bar. It's more just something that you can use to get rid of extra apples at the end of the season. And it's supposed to be fun, so that's our plan.
And it's my understanding that you already have a license from the state to, I'll say, make cider. This is, so you've already got that. However, at this point, this is simply, this is simply to, for a pouring license.
Yes, sir, that's correct. We already renewed our license for twenty twenty one. We've been in contact with the ABCC a lot. Think I have a pretty good handle on it. I did learn a lot during the application process. So, it is nice to know about liability and what you're doing. So, that was very educational.
All right. As this is a public hearing at this point, unless, if you're all set, Court, if you're all set, what we'll do is open this up for comments from the public and then we'll discuss it amongst ourselves. So, if there is any public input that people would like to have during this hearing, please raise your hand virtually and we will recognize you.
I don't have a raise hand button, but I would have a question.
All right. Mr. Talpe?
This is Tom. Yeah, Tom Talpe. Chelsea, are these products made on-site? Or, I mean, where do these products come from?
So, we started making our own hard cider last year. And we didn't make very much of it because frankly, we didn't know what we're doing. But we are, we did increase production this year because it went really well. And anything that we feel like we can't make ourselves to meet production, we have a friend, I mean, he's a really good guy in Boxborough Pony Shack Cider and he'll take some of our cider and make cider for us if we, like, have a huge demand for it. But we are trying to make most of it ourselves. That's the idea.
Well, so is the product limited to farm-grown ciders? Or, I mean, where, I just, I'm curious, what product to sell and where they come from?
So, our license is a farm winery license, so we're only supposed to sell stuff with our product in it. So, we're not bringing in cider from anywhere else to sell on premises. Anything that we're selling that is hard cider is made with our own apples.
Oh, I see. So, you send it to them for production, but it's your original?
Yeah, we're just limited by space because we're very new to this and we are trying to do it in a way that we don't do it poorly, so.
And you also mentioned that you had a license for your tent and that the license you are pursuing is specific to the tent. Is that, is the license somehow constrained to being in that one, if you will, temporary structure? How does, how does this change over time? Do you need a new license if you leave the tent, basically?
Yeah, so we, I was, I started this process two years ago and was a bit blindsided because I got the liquor license and I was like, cool, all set, great. Not true. Apparently, you need a pour license to pour the alcohol into a cup and sell that on your premises. So, we sold Growlers last year out of our farm store. And we sold them in November and December, which was great because all of our staff is over eighteen and it's much easier during the fall. I don't think that's a great idea. But the tent itself needs to be permitted and have a pour permit to be able to serve poured drinks in that very specific area. And if we wanted to extend it, we would have to apply for an amendment to that pour permit to pour on another part of the property. So, we're just going for a pour permit for that particular area.
Okay.
Denise?
Is the pour permit the town's to grant? I'm not familiar with the process or the state.
I'll let you weigh in on that, Denise.
So, yes, the Board of Selectmen are the local licensing authorities, so they are the ones that would authorize the permit with the approval of the Alcohol Beverage Control Commission of the state. And Chelsea was exactly correct. When someone's applying for a liquor license, they need to describe the specific premises where the alcohol will be sold. And they have applied for their area being a forty-by-sixty tented area. Any changes to that, they would have to apply to change the premises that is licensed. So, that's for enforcement purposes and quite frankly, just so people know where they can and cannot consume beverages on a property.
Right.
Yeah, we don't want people wandering around with drinks here.
The tent seems necessarily seasonal. I mean, I guess you could try to heat it and operate it in cold weather, but.
Yeah, just summer and fall for us right now. We don't have much interest in making it a year-round thing, especially, like I said, we're doing this gradually, so maybe eventually, but not yet.
Megan, you had a question?
No, I just, a clarification on public hearings. So, when someone is speaking, if people could state what address they're from, that is helpful. And I think for the record, just moving forward. Thank you.
I apologize.
No, it's okay.
I should have mentioned that.
I think I identified myself, Tom Talpe, one seventy Whitman.
Perfect. Thank you.
Okay, that's, those are my questions. Thank you, Chelsea.
Yeah, if you ever wanna talk to me about it, come on down. Have a go.
Oh, yeah. I know. I know. Thanks.
Are there any other comments relating to this? Sherri Kotoski?
Hey, Sherri Kotoski at One-on-One Kingland. I just wanted to say this is an excellent idea and I'm really excited to hear about it. Wish I knew you were doing it last year. Really wish you were doing it last year.
Thanks. I'm so excited. I know, but like, I think it would make, everyone's just trying to get out of their house. So, hopefully this will make for a fun summer.
Actually, since you're considering bringing in music or bands too, I think it would be a great addition to the neighborhood.
Thank you.
I am not seeing any other hands up at the moment. I'll give it another thirty seconds or so if anybody has any comments. Going once, going twice. All right. Now, let's see. At this point, we'll take questions, comments from the board. Jim?
I just wanna say I'm very happy to see the fruition of this whole process, which you started a couple of years ago, and I'm glad to see that you're on the cusp of doing what you wanted to do. I very much appreciate you going through the obviously convoluted process of applying for state and local licenses. I realize how convoluted it is because there are a hundred pages of application materials in our packet.
It was not a short process.
No. But, you know, but you got through it and you're doing it the right way and I appreciate that. For anyone who is concerned at all about what's going on here, I just wanna clarify, although I think it's been said, Honey Pot already has a state license that seems to allow them to manufacture the alcohol and even to sell bottles of it, which I think they've done on a limited basis. What we are doing is adding a license, which we're allowed to do, to allow consumption on premises. Of course, that raises its own issues, but we have in our materials total of nine conditions recommended by the police and fire departments. And I personally am satisfied with those. Obviously, TIP certified servers, crowd control management for the employees, emergency access for vehicles among them. Right now, I can't think of anything else, though I would be open to suggestions. But just wanna say thanks for going through this whole process, Chelsea, and it looks good.
Thank you. I really appreciate the support. And hopefully, this will be something that the town can enjoy. And if you guys have any questions or if anyone has any questions, I'm super happy to talk about it.
Megan?
I also am very excited about this. I think it's going to be a phenomenal addition, so I'm really excited about that. Having said that, I have a couple of just questions that I just, as Jim was saying, it was a hundred pages, so I may have missed it, which is possible. What are the hours and the dates that you're shooting for? And like, how late do you think it's gonna run? And kind of all of that stuff, especially if you're talking about, like, you know, getting permits for entertainment or whatever. I know when I was on the planning board part, a lot of it was sort of, you know, what's the impact gonna be on the butters? And so, I just wanna make sure that, yeah, I just, I wanna sort of hear what you're thinking.
So, during the fall, we were doing it eleven to four on the weekends. So, um, during the fall, we were doing it eleven to four, um, on the weekends. And that worked very well for us. We have no interest in being open any later, especially during the fall season, because I am so tired. During the summer, we were thinking about maybe more of like an evening thing, but I don't think anything past sunset. Um, and just talking to the abutters, we're, especially, my dad and I were discussing like the first probably one or two of these that we do would probably just be for stover weddings because we're, you know, we're the happy kings. We wanna make sure that things are smooth. And, um, I, we don't have the setup to do anything past sunset right now.
Got it.
Like, maybe that will change, but you guys will need the first to know. Uh, we don't have the lights.
Yeah.
It would be nice to have a band, but I think more of like a neighborhood block party setup, less of a like pu- parties.
Perfect, perfect.
Uh, I I think the band gets into a whole different license, by the way.
Yes, 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 yes.
Yeah, I, we haven't really got it up till this point, but I just think it would be so fun.
Right.
Yeah.
I I agree.
Chelsea, can I ask a clarification?
Of course.
In the in the summer, are you looking at just weekends as well?
Uh, yeah, we're just thinking maybe Friday, Saturday. We're actually just thinking Saturday, um, to start off. If, I mean, we're open until mid-July anyway, so it wouldn't be probably before that. Um, honestly, like, I, this is all thoughts. Um, we haven't done this before, so we're approaching it as a a work in progress. We'll do something, it will either fail or it will succeed, and then we'll work from there. Um, but like I said, we don't plan on doing anything after sunset. So it will be daylight hours and our neighbors will be the first people that we will be talking to about feedback.
Perfect.
Is it worth thinking about adding that as a condition?
Well, that's, you'll have to decide if you wanna set those conditions on the license or if you wanna leave them to the sort of stow liquor license hours.
I got that.
Um, Ellen, comments?
Yeah, um, hi, Chelsea. So, um, let's see, they asked some of the questions. Are you gonna be serving food?
Hmm.
Um, given that it's alcohol?
Um, I think, well, we serve food on the property during the fall, so that doesn't really change. Um, I think during the summer, depending on what method we go with, I doubt we will be doing it without food. We're thinking of a grill setup with the two drink maximum. Fortunately, a two drink maximum makes it pretty easy to operate because, um, it's unlikely that we're going to have too many people stumbling around. Uh, the plan is to have food in some capacity with it either just a mat or a full bar setup. Kind of depends what people respond to, but if we're only doing it one day a week, we are planning on having it be something like having a grill, having donuts available, having the cider tent set up, you know, for four or five hours.
Um, and the other question, so I've actually had to do these myself. And you're put, they ask a question around, um, hours on the premises in terms of the management as as you are the manager. Um, and you just said, well, you live on the property, but I think that the specific question is you're responsible for being, and I I can't remember if this is A B C C rules or local rules, but that the manager of the establishment has to be on site in the cider tent the whole time. Is there nobody else that's gonna be a backup to you? Are you the only manager?
My husband, um, has actually been pretty involved in this process too. And he, um, has been helping out with the cider tent. He's thirty, so he's pretty responsible. Um, but when I'm not there, he will be more than happy to step in. He lives here as well.
So he needs to go through the same process, though, with the quarry and everything?
Yeah, I mean, my dad too. Someone responsible will be there and we can get a quarry for my husband as well. That would make everybody more comfortable.
Well, I think it's required, actually. It's not just about comfort.
I don't think that there will be much, much of, much time that I will not be present, um, for this process just because I'm always here. But if if that does, that's a very good point. I will have to come up with.
Yeah, I mean, I, it's just, it's a challenge to do it and I'm just, I I think I would want you to have someone.
I appreciate that, thank you.
There, I mean, and, you know, that's why it's also good to hear that the hours are fairly finite. So it's not like an eight hour day for multiple days. But but still, you know, you're gonna have a lot of demands on your time around the orchard generally, so I think it's important to have someone.
Make a good point. Um, yeah, I, our whole process for this was just to have an adult that can make sure the rules are being followed because alcohol.
Yeah.
Um, but I actually should probably think about that a little bit more. I mean, I'm just always here, so it didn't even cross my mind's.
I think just having, I mean, you know, and obviously, you know, your dad's on the paper already, but I think just having one other person, whether it's your husband or somebody else on staff.
That's a good idea. Thank you. I appreciate it.
And then, and the quarry part is easy. I mean, I think in terms of the tips training, which also isn't heavy lifting, um, if you can do it online. Uh, but it's, it's worth having multiple people just to give you, I mean, give you the break if you need it, you know?
Flexibility for sure is really nice to have.
That's all I got, Tom.
Okay, Courtney?
So Chelsea, I'd like to commend you again for, um, just navigating the process of all of this. I I, um, a hundred pages of materials to generate is no small thing. And and, um, I've also managed a small restaurant. And, uh, you know, being there all the time can still be a big stretch. So I kinda echo a little bit what Ellen's saying. Um, apropos of that, does anybody know if there's, is there any, um, like, a, an amendment process or anything if Chelsea wanted to add her husband as a responsible party or a manager? Um, is there a particular way in which she would need to to get us information about his being qualified?
Can the town administrator address that?
Yeah, so there is no legal requirement to have more than one manager. Uh, most restaurants have a manager, um, designated under the liquor license. They are not necessarily required to be there at all hours of operating. I mean, take any restaurant, the manager is not there all the hours of operation, but they are responsible for the staff that works under them and serves the alcohol. Um, and I guess as far as Chelsea, um, Chelsea, are you serving the alcohol or will you be bringing in staff that will be TIPS certified?
It's not me. Everyone who's worked in the tent has been TIPS certified.
Right, that's right.
Um, including my husband, who, what?
But it's not you. Yeah, but it's not you.
No, no, no. I need someone. I, I.
Okay.
I would love to, it sounds so fun.
Can't do everything.
Um, but yeah, no, everyone's been TIPS certified, including my husband, who also doesn't really serve alcohol, but he sort of mans area, but he is just in case he needs to.
Yes, so so you don't need to put anyone else on file with us. Um, the A B C C just requires a designated manager, which would be you, that would be responsible for the actions that take place there.
So the application.
I just wanted to clarify. When I was in Framingham, I was required, we didn't even have a full time bar and we had to have at least two people named as manager and assistant manager to to basically say yes, well, someone will be there at all times. So I'm surprised to hear you say that, Denise.
Yeah, that may be a Framingham ordinance. Um, it's not an A B C C requirement.
Mm-hmm.
So just to be clear, the application materials are 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 complete and ready to be acted on?
Yes.
Yeah, I think so. Yes, that is correct.
Okay.
Thank you, thank you all for the clarification. And, uh, Chelsea, again, I think, I think it sounds like it should be a really fun addition. So I hope, I hope you you realize the fun and it and it's as good as as, uh, you're looking forward to.
Thank you. I appreciate it.
All right.
And.
Are you ready to close the public hearing?
Um, I was just gonna say that a- as you mentioned, Jim, you know, it's, we've got material from the police department, fire department. Everything seems to be clean on this. And, um, the conditions that the police department, fire department have, uh, mentioned, um, will need to be imposed upon this. And it's, uh, to my knowledge, it's no different than what was proposed, uh, when we issued the temporary licenses before. And it should all be good, and.
Well, I think it's a bit more extensive than that.
Hmm.
Um, it, but they're appropriate.
They're appropriate.
May I just comment, though, because Chelsea's mentioned it a few times? So, um, the requirement by the police is no longer a two drink, uh, limit. That's certainly something the board can do, but they felt, the chief feels that, uh, we don't limit any other establishment in town as far as, um, pouring goes, so certainly the.
Thank you. I will be implementing that on our own, and I will let you guys know. I I just think for us, it's probably the right fit. I would appreciate it not being an implementation from you guys in case we ever wanna change it. I'd be happy to talk about it. But like I said, we're not gonna try and become a bar and I don't know if we're ready for that yet. So for us right now, that's that's where we're at. It should give you a good metric of where we're at as a, an establishment.
But that could be a board requirement, but when you get the police requirements, it's not on there, so.
I appreciate the the trust. That's nice.
I find it doing.
Well, I think it's, it, sorry. It's trust, oh, sorry. So, um.
Um. I just wanted to remain consistent with what we, uh, do throughout the rest of the town. And, uh, we didn't have concerns, um, or the concerns we had never came to fruition for last time. So, you know, Chelsea's been maintaining a good place down there, so we just wanted to give you opportunity to, for her to succeed.
Oh, thanks.
Um, I will say it's not just a trust thing, Chelsea. It's also, um, it's, you have the liability as a as a business.
Does it? I know.
So it's, I mean, it's, it's.
I appreciate your endeavor.
It's only your, I mean, having having worked in a bar, um, you, it'll, it really, you know that you can, as much as we and whatever we decide, if we decide that we wanna stick stick it to, um, or we allow you to just properly serve, given the the TIPS certification of the bartenders and knowing, you know, when people have been over, or when not to over serve. Um, but yeah, it it ultimately, the liability of the people on the property is is on you guys, so.
Yeah, absolutely, I agree. Well, I understand.
Um, yeah.
I find myself not not concerned about an artificial limit of two drinks.
I I think so too, because I think it really is on the bartender, because you could have.
Well, if if it were, if it were an informal event, like a one day liquor license and we weren't confident there was gonna be a TIPS certified server, I might want that.
Right. Right.
But, you know, the the concern with over serving theoretically is addressed by the TIPS certification. And as Ms. Birch McMichael points out, if you've got, if you and Andrew have any sense whatsoever, you don't want people over indulging and then getting in cars. Um, and I think you know that, so. Um, I'm actually, in terms of conditions, the only one that I really wanna talk to my colleagues in the town administrator about is hours. Um, whether we wanna add something on that.
Yeah. But, so what's addressed in? I'm trying to remember the bylaws for outdoor, like, so I know that I've looked at bands, for example, and they are only allowed to, or I think if there's like an eight o'clock or earlier than that limit. And I and I think that, what what's the latest except for the hay, for the, what's the latest you guys are open in the in the fall?
So we close at six P M.
Okay.
And like, no, six thirty is really the latest things will run.
Okay, when you do the the hay, not the hayrides, when you do the maze, the maze is what I'm trying to say.
Yeah. Maze closes a little bit earlier. The hayrides are usually what run late because we're getting people back to their cars.
Got it, okay.
And what is the earliest you would be serving alcohol?
Eleven o'clock.
So if we confine the hours from, let's say, ten o'clock to seven P M,
Eleven and five.
That would do it for you?
I don't see any issue with that.
Yeah, I think that works. And the ten o'clock, you're saying just so that they can get set up?
Just in case.
Oh, yeah, yeah, we we start setting up at that.
No, I mean, what's the law? Like, I I guess that's what I don't, I thought that there was like.
You you can start breaking it sick.
So it's eight.
I don't, if they. Eight to eight, eight A M to one A M the next day is the window you can have, so.
Okay, okay, okay. Okay.
I'm trying, yeah, I'm I'm trying to build in a little window. If somebody's there and and they make a sale slightly before or eleven o'clock, I don't want it to be a technical violation or something.
Got it, got it, got it. Okay, yep. No, I'd be okay with that.
Yeah, however, there was, Chelsea was mentioning that, uh, potentially, uh, having some things in the evening bu- like before sunset.
Yeah, but I, oh, in the summer, you mean?
Right.
In the summer.
Yeah. Yeah, but I think seven is still fine.
Yeah, i- if if Chelsea's good with that, I'm fine.
Hi, hi, this is Andrew.
Hi, Andrew.
Hi, Andrew.
Hello, Andrew.
Andrew Martin. Uh, I've been listening in here, visiting Chelsea's bag, really. Um, but if I could just chime in, we've actually been to another orchard. Chelsea and I didn't talk about hours too much and kind of caught us a little bit off guard there. Where they did like a a family Friday night thing with entertainment and so forth that didn't actually start until six o'clock. So it tended to run till, I think it ran till eight thirty or nine. Whereas, you know, people don't get out of work until five and then, you know, they get there at six. If if we end up doing a Friday night, I'm just looking at it. And again, we have no history, no, nothing to base this on, but maybe a little more flexibility later in the evening than than seven thirty, um, if we're gonna do that.
So let me ask the town, let me ask the town administrator a question. I'm assuming Andrew is saying that that isn't gonna be part of the normal business model, that there might be the isolated event.
No.
We could apply for a permit, right? Yeah.
Could they not come in and apply for an event permit?
They could, yeah.
Okay, so Andrew, to address your question, I I really think what we're trying to address here is the the day to day S O P business model you're gonna have. Um, which doesn't sound like it includes concerts at night. If you do find yourself doing that, you can come back to us for special event permits and those will have their own conditions.
It wasn't so much talking about concerts, it was more like what I was saying for the summer. And I don't know, we don't know.
Right.
I mean, but, uh, it might, he's saying people don't get out of work until five.
Yeah.
And I know with Corona, we have no more concept of time. But if we do go back into normal working hours, it might be nice to have something from like five to eight, where we have that extra little bit of flexibility. And I don't know if we're ever, we will need it, but it's just something to throw out there in case we do run into it.
So eight P M?
And and you could certainly do summer hours and fall hours where it's it's lighter out in the summer later. You could do a a later time if you wanted and then bring it back to sort of eleven to four or something during the fall if you wanted.
Be fine. Like I said, in the fall, I can't really see us doing it. I, Dad, I don't know if you wanna work it, but I am not staying up until the fall Saturday evening.
So so let's, so let's be specific here. We're we're talking about normal hours of ten to seven, when, during what months?
September and October.
So July and August later hours and September, October earlier hours?
Um, ten, ten to eight for, let's say, June, July and August? You, well, you're never gonna be open in June.
Eleven thirty?
What?
Oh, got it, till eight thirty.
Eight thirty?
Eight thirty.
Eight thirty's great.
Perfect.
Eight thirties, so let's say eight, ten A M to eight thirty P M, July and August.
So it's ten A M?
Yep, that's perfect. Thank you.
I'm sorry, you started with June. Is it June, July and August?
So I took June out because I realized I don't think any orchard's open in June.
Okay.
Um.
Some are, but not us. That's fine. July and August were perfectly.
Okay.
Okay.
And and then, really, it's because they do have the option to do it for the rest of the year. Just leave the rest of the year till seven?
And are we only doing weekends or are you leaving them flexibility for any day? I think Friday, Saturday.
Friday, Saturday for the extended hours? So.
I mean. So Fridays and Saturdays, July and August, from ten A M to eight thirty P M?
That's, I'm just saying, that's my my preference, but.
So are you, so 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 Chelsea, are you are you saying normal hours will be ten to seven?
Yes.
From July to October, but there will be occasional weekend nights when you'll want to serve until eight thirty?
Yeah, I mean.
Okay.
Part of our, part of the the plan, I mean, and for for neighbors and stuff is is over the summer to have something in the evening on like a Friday or Saturday night where people can come, grab food, grab a drink, hang out, and it would be nice to have a little bit more flexibility. Obviously, our neighbors are less likely to come and hang out on evening in the fall and we like to shut down and clean up and have people go home. So, um, it would be nice to have a little bit more flexibility in the summer when we have more locals coming by and we're fine with the seven P M during the fall.
So if if we were to condition it to be, um, to allow serving from ten A M to seven P M, except that during July and August on Friday and Saturday nights, extended hours to eight thirty P M, that would do it for you. Is that right?
It sounds very acceptable to me.
Okay.
I'm sorry, can I ask a clarification? Does that include Sundays on the summer or we're just talking Friday and Saturdays?
Dad, I can't, I don't think we're gonna be doing anything on Sundays, do you?
No, I don't think we do anything Sunday.
Okay, cool, yes, so Friday and Saturday is great.
But then the fall, we're talking Saturday and Sunday, not Fridays?
Uh, for the, yeah, we just do Saturdays and Sundays from eleven to four in the tent on the weekends during the fall.
And what if July fourth falls on a weekday? Do you want July fourth or July third?
I appreciate the combination, I don't think.
Okay.
We don't open until about the sixteenth, so I don't think that will be a problem.
Okay. Alright, so that's what we're.
I what what I was wondering is, what about like um Columbus Day weekend and so on, would you be serving on what, on the Mondays?
Actually, that's a really good point, um if you wouldn't mind giving us that Monday, that would be excellent.
Can we get them to apply for an event, like a, I just, I'm worried that this permit is like.
I think you're at the point, there's some, there's there's some discomfort arising on the board, so it it sound, and you can always apply for a special event permit.
All over the place.
So it 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 sounds like we're comfortable.
Well, hang on, I I think we gotta let the other two on the Zoom call weigh in as well, cause they they've not been able to weigh in.
Okay. Yeah, true, sure.
Yep.
Um, so Eleanor or Courtney?
Eleanor Courtney?
I'm wondering if, I hear you Denise, and I'm wondering if there's only one Monday holiday in the in the timeframe they're looking at, if there's a way that we can roll it in. All the hard work they've done for this permit.
I will apply for it every year, I mean, it's just a consistent Monday that we're always slammed. Um, we don't really have any other reoccurring holidays during our business season um that fall on the same day, that would be the only one.
I don't I don't see a big problem with that, Jim, you know.
Um, I'm I'm good with, I just want hours and I generally want them not to be serving at night, um.
Eleven to four on that Monday would give you the same hours as the weekend days, it would be nothing special.
I'm sorry, I I'm confused, eleven to four?
That's that's when they're they're playing.
Oh, that's what.
This, that's a fall hour.
Sorry, you said ten to seven, if you wanted to shorten it to eleven to four on the Labor Day Monday, or just keep it from ten to seven, but just know that we will be serving from eleven to four on that Monday.
Oh, so we're talking Labor Day and Columbus Day?
Just, did I say Labor Day and Columbus Day, it's Columbus Day, we're not even open on Labor Day.
I know, okay. Okay.
Good Lord, there's too many holidays.
So.
So, can I actually speak, Jim?
Yeah, well, yeah, sorry.
Um, so I I don't like the idea of ten o'clock, then it's way too early for, I mean, the orchard can be open, but I think it's, I mean, just for setup, there's no need. I I I liked her, you know, Chelsea had said eleven to four repeatedly and I, at the very least, I wouldn't wanna start before eleven, I mean, it's alcohol, you know. What's the message, serving alcohol at ten o'clock in the morning, so um I I I mean, I I'm. I support this idea of sort of setting some regular times and being flexible on Columbus Day is fine, but I I'm a little concerned about the. It's, you're offering more time than they ask for and and you're not thinking about the neighbors in the fall, so.
I'm just trying to.
The neighbors get overwhelmed, I I've heard from multiple people very concerned about, this is one more thing that's gonna draw too many more people, so I'd like to see. Um, you know, some some at least some acknowledgement of of the, you know, the summer is great, I mean, I think it's a great idea and it's really nice that they're opening it to, or Chelsea, that you're you guys are opening it to the town first. Um, but I am concerned about the added crush for the for the weekends in the fall. Um, and then, and I would like to also, I mean, when we get off the hours thing, to talk about um second managers and the tip certification.
So. Ellen, what are you suggesting on the hours, I'm just trying to come up with a with a motion?
Well, I I think not starting before eleven.
So eleven's fine, but then on in the fall, you said, are you?
Well, Chelsea had said fall, she was planning on eleven to four, and then you kept on saying seven, and I don't know, the seven was summertime, so I don't, I don't know if there's a value to having the same time. All the way through or not, but I'm I'm concerned about it um in terms of as the crowds increase, um and and they're already closing. I mean, a- as we, as you all discussed, that there are special event permits if they're gonna do music or a special Friday night thing or something.
So Ellen, are you?
So I'm I'm not sure why it's going till seven o'clock.
So are you suggesting eleven to four for September and October?
Chelsea did that, is that what you had been thinking, I mean, if if you guys want later, I just, I didn't understand why Jim was pushing for a later hour when you were proposing.
No, I really appreciate flexibility, I mean, we don't plan on serving later right now, we definitely won't ever go past seven, I mean.
Jim is not.
Eleven to five would be acceptable for us, um eleven to seven is is fine, I mean, we're not planning right now to be outside of that timeframe, but. Um, it's it's nice to have a little bit of a buffer. Also, we've had this going for the last two years and it's um been really successful, but I don't think it has. Most people who are coming here to pick apples, it's like a side thing that they do. Um, I completely understand the neighbor's apprehension, but that's part of why we ran it for two years was to see if there was really any significant increase or if we had any problems with it. Um, and Chief Sleet was really good about setting parameters for us and I think it worked out really well. Um, I do like to have a little bit of flexibility, just because I really don't know what the future is going to bring for us. Um, but if it makes you more comfortable, eleven to five or six would be perfectly reasonable, we're not gonna go past closing time anyway.
Hey Ellen, it's it's Andrew here, if I could just wait, comment on your thoughts. Um, I hear you completely, and but conversely, you know, I don't think we're gonna really start at ten, but you know, maybe we'll start at eleven, ten thirty if we had that ability to start before eleven. But it you talked about the crush, by having the hours being a little bit longer some days, especially the busier days. It spreads it out a little bit more, so it's less of a crush than if it if it's compacted a little more, it makes for more of a crush, actually. Um, certainly, we don't wanna, I I agree with you, it seems strange to me to be to be preaching before new time at all, but that's the way the world is sometimes, it seems, that's all, thank you.
So for the record, Jim isn't pushing for anything other than clarity. Um, and I s- and even after that entire exchange, I do not hear agreement on a window of hours. Although I have heard ten thirty suggested by Andrew and six P M suggested by Chelsea. Ellen, are you good with that?
I, yeah, or I'd ra- I mean, I'm fine with eleven to seven, actually, I'd rather go later, and so.
So we're back to eleven to seven, okay.
Again, Ellen.
Yeah, we're we're fine with that, we really didn't serve, we we weren't really comfortable serving alcohol before eleven anyway, we really wondered what they were doing.
I'm good with, personally, I'm good with ten thirty or eleven and to seven, and.
Are we talking summer or just fall now?
Just just for the fall.
Like the summer.
Just for the fall.
I thought that we're trying to be simple and keep it for the whole, just from when they open for the fall.
For the whole time, okay, okay.
Yes, eleven to seven will be the standard hours for the whole season, but then there'll be exceptions in July and August for extended hours to eight thirty.
July.
And I did not, I I am confused about Columbus Day, which will also be an exception, but that sounded like.
Eleven to seven, right, cause it falls in the fall?
Yes.
It it's a, it's, that'd be the regular fall hours.
Yes.
Yes, okay.
Okay.
So it'll be Friday or it'd be Saturdays and Sundays, correct?
Yes.
In the fall.
In the fall, with the exception of Columbus Day, which would be the one additional day.
But.
But that's.
But 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 what, no, because because Columbus Day is a Monday, it would be okay to be eleven to seven.
Mm-hmm, yes.
And that's good, right, eleven to seven on Columbus Day is good?
Perfect.
Okay, so I I do have, I think I have a motion.
Alright, uh first, do we need, may need to close the public hearing, I believe?
We close the hearing, right.
Well, I think Ellen had other things she wanna talk about, oh.
Oh, yeah.
I'm sorry.
I just wanna say that we do have um another appointment that was scheduled for seven forty-five, and in fairness to the folks waiting to wait to. For that process, we may wanna move it on.
Totally agree.
I'm sorry, but I, this is important to get this right, and I'm I don't wanna continue it, cause they've been waiting too long. I mean, I think, you know, so.
So, um, alright, first, I'm gonna close the public hearing, then we move on, so if I can have a motion to close the public hearing?
Uh, Mr. Chairman, I moved the public hearing for the liquor license application for Honey Pot Hill Orchard at one thirty-eighth Sudbury Road in Stowe be closed.
Second?
Roll call vote, all in favor, Ellen?
Aye.
Courtney?
Aye.
Megan?
Aye.
Jim?
Aye.
And chair votes aye, so the public hearing is closed. Um, to move this along, Jim, if you have a motion, I'm willing to accept it.
So Denise, I'm gonna read the motion with the actual conditions from the police. And fire, though two of the fire conditions are subsumed by the police condition, so I'm just gonna add the one, the maintain access for emergency vehicle.
Okay.
And I'm gonna add the hours, is that okay?
Okay, yes, please, cause I'm still not clear on what you settled on for hours.
Mister Chair, I I move to approve the section nineteen B N in Perrin's Farmer Series On Premises Liquor License Application for Honey Pot Hill Orchard at one thirty-eighth Sudbury Road. In Stowe, as described in the application, received January twenty-two, twenty twenty-one. And subject to final approval by the Massachusetts Alcoholic Beverages Control Commission with the following conditions. One, servers will be tips certified, tips training and intervention procedures for servers. Um, identifications will be checked prior to entering the designated area. Alcohol consumption will occur only within the designated area, which will be clearly marked by rope, fence or other barricade. On-site workers at the designated area for alcohol will be certified as crowd managers. Persons under the age of twenty-one will not be admitted unless with a parent or guardian. Site will adhere to Fire and Building Department recommendations, the site will adhere to all state laws and alcoholic beverages control commission regulations. There will be a successful walkthrough by uh police and fire public safety personnel prior to opening. Access will be maintained for emergency vehicle access while the site is occupied. And the site will operate for the serving of alcohol only during the hours of eleven A M to seven P M. Provided, however, in the months of July and August, on Fridays and Saturdays. The site may extend hours to eight thirty P M.
I believe, I believe that we had talked about having, I think the their normal hours were only gonna be Fridays and Saturdays, eleven to seven in the fall. But it was only gonna be Fridays and Saturdays, correct? Mark?
So what I got was July and August, Friday and Saturday, eleven to eight thirty. September and October, Saturdays and Sundays, eleven to seven. That's what I picked up on the conversation, but.
Yep.
Mm-hmm.
September and October, what days of the week?
September and October, Saturdays and Sundays.
Saturdays and Sundays.
Saturdays and Sundays, with the exception of Columbus Day.
Hmm, it's the eleven to seven.
So.
July and August is Friday and Saturday.
Just don't forget Columbus Day.
Mm-hmm.
Yep. Hey, I I I brought up Columbus Day.
So the last condition, I I withdraw and will be, um, the site will operate for the serving of alcohol only during the hours of. S- uh eleven A M to seven P M during the months of September and October, on Saturdays, Sundays and Columbus Day. Um, provided, however, that during and during the months of July and August. The hours will be eleven A M to eight thirty P M on Fridays and Saturdays.
That was my understanding.
So just to repeat that, eleven to seven, September and October, on Saturdays, Sundays and Columbus Day. Eleven to eight thirty in July and August, on Fridays and Saturdays.
I have a question, please don't hurt me, um, if we decided we wanted to do like a weekend day in November or December. Or do we do like eleven to seven, or do we just apply for a special permit or forget it and go home?
Apply for a special permit.
I'm just asking for dev- just so I know.
I think these are your normal working hours.
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay, cool, okay, you, that's perfect, great, perfect.
Okay.
Yeah.
You would need to reach out, though, if you're planning to do something outside of July through October. Because your license will only authorize you July, August, September and October at the hours they've defined. So if you wanted to do something in November and December, you need to call me, um, so that we could get you a.
September, right.
We can't do a one day permit, because if you have a full license, you can't get a one day liquor license, so we'd have to give you a special permit for that specific event.
Could.
I I was gonna suggest that we maybe extend it to November, cause if it happens warm November, why not?
Ten through November.
Yeah, thank you, I just, I I can't, um, I don't know if we're gonna use it, but I also don't wanna have to come back to live it.
Yeah.
I'm good with November.
I think it makes sense, because if it's warmer and you have more people out and, yeah, we have no idea what it's gonna look like and. I'd rather err on the side of giving them more time than having them have to come back.
Sure. So the fall hours would be for September, Oc- and October and November.
Yep.
Including, including.
On Saturdays, Sundays and Columbus Day, eleven A M to seven P M.
Mm-hmm.
Yes.
Sure.
Uh, I amend my motion to make that condition.
Great.
Second.
I'll second your motion.
Alright.
Alright, well, whatever.
Alright, all in favor? Aye?
Aye.
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 Ellen and Courtney were aye, so. I think we're done.
Okay, another public hearing.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you, sorry it took so long.
Bye.
Good luck.
Rock and roll.
Alright. Now, on to the next public hearing, next public hearing, we have, it was actually scheduled for fifteen minutes or twenty minutes ago. This is a public hearing about a regarding a um hybrid and storage tank at Minuteman Airfield. And the notice that was published in the Stowe Independent on February twenty-fourth reads as follows. Notice is hereby given that the Board of Selectmen will conduct a public hearing in accordance with Mass General Law C one forty-eight. On the application of by Donald G. McPherson for the installation of a seventy thousand foot cubic. Or gaseous, uh cubic foot gaseous hydrogen trailer. Uh, Alakai Technologies situated at Minuteman Airfield three oh two Boxborough Road. Public hearing will be held on the license application on Tuesday, March ninth, twenty twenty-one. At seven forty-five P M in the Stow Town building, creating great road, with attendance via Zoom as the only method to participate. Um, I'll take a motion to open the public hearing.
Mister Chair, I move to open the uh public hearing on. The uh application for a license for installation of a seventy thousand cubic foot gaseous hydrogen trailer for Alakai Technologies at Minuteman Airfield.
Second?
Uh, roll call vote, uh Ellen?
Aye.
Courtney? Courtney?
She said aye.
I see you saying something.
Aye.
Thank you. Megan?
Aye.
Jim?
Aye.
Chair votes aye, public hearing is open. Um, is Mister McPherson on the line? Hello, Don? Are you there?
Affirmative, and I'm now unmuted.
Hello, Don, how are you today?
I'm seventy-five years old.
Excellent. Glad to hear that.
Happy birthday.
Yeah, beats the alternative, right?
Yep. Um, if you can tell us a little bit about uh what you're thinking about? And why you're here asking for a permit?
I would be happy. No, thank you, um, my name is there because it's officially required and I would ask the the real applicants to make the presentation. If that's okay with you guys?
It's okay with them, okay with us? And as long as they can uh let us know who they are?
Yeah, I saw Bill and Glenn somewhere earlier in the crowd.
This is uh Bill and Glenn here, I'm Glenn Austin.
Yeah.
Bill Spillane is over on the other side of the conference table here, we're at Minuteman right now. Our company name is Alakai Technologies. We're working on an air mobility vehicle that uh is also referred to as the EZ TALL, electric vertical takeoff and landing. Ours is uh very unique in the fact that it will operate off of hydrogen. Uh, obviously, to do some testing and to uh work on the research and development of this vehicle, we have to have hydrogen on site. The quantity that we use it in is at a threshold above uh what is required to have license for. We have a a website, uh Outdive, uh I'm sorry, Sky, S K A I dot co, C O. If anybody would like to go on there and uh take a look. Um, if you happen to be out where we can schedule a a site visit uh to get a little more idea of what we're doing, we have had the vehicle. Uh, here testing it with low volumes of hydrogen in the past, but our our endurance test is I think a a little bit more volume. Hope that gives everybody an idea of what we're doing, uh the vehicle looks a little like a drone. Uh, however, it has a payload of over a thousand. Uh, however, it has a payload of over a thousand pounds, it can carry passengers uh, four with a pilot. Um, the exhaust that comes out of the vehicle is water and water vapors. Uh, we're shooting for a hundred percent, or as close as you can to renewable energy. Um, we're wanting to make the environment great, we're wanting to do a world-changing event in our vehicle. If there's any questions, we're open to them, um, far away.
I think one thing um, might, that might be helpful. Um, and maybe keep some questions down would be is if we can put up a, a map of where you uh, would like to place the trailer?
Yes, I'm sorry.
Anything I don't, uh, uh, A-R-U-P, uh, John and Victoria is on the line there, consultants to show that we are in compliance and uh. Keep us on track and safe, uh, John or Victoria, I'd like for us to.
Hi, my name is Victoria, I'm uh, from A-R-U-P. Um, yes, so we submitted a license package that includes the site plan, um, if it would be helpful, we can. Um, show that, uh, to follow along.
Sorry, Victoria, if we could, if we could dial back just a second, I just wanted to explain our role.
Yeah, absolutely.
Um, and our relationship to Alakai, uh, before we get into the detail, um. Uh, as Victoria mentioned, um, our company name is A-R-U-P, A-R-U-P. We are consulting and engineering firm. Uh, our local office is at sixty State Street in Boston. Where we have approximately ninety-five uh, staff of multiple engineering and consulting disciplines. Uh, Victoria and I are both uh, chemical engineers and fire protection engineers. Um, my license is in Massachusetts, so I'm a registered fire protection engineer, uh, in the Commonwealth. And have been uh, for uh, just over twenty years. Um, our hydrogen experience spans many projects, including with Alakai Technologies, uh, both at their Hopkinton facility. As well as at their Stowe facility, uh, we've been working together uh, as a team since November of two thousand eighteen. And our job, uh, among other things, is to, uh, number one. Uh, make sure that all of the uh, fire safety protocols. And compliance requirements that are contained in five twenty-seven CMR, the Massachusetts uh, Comprehensive Fire Safety Code are followed. And uh, we are also the engineer of record, um, for uh, detection alarm and notification. Uh, for the hydrogen installation. So, um, as I mentioned, we've been working together since two thousand eighteen. And that collaboration has included ongoing discussions with Chief Landry and Captain Benoit at Stowe Fire Department. Uh, we first met in two thousand eighteen and we've, we've kept discussions going since then, um, on various subjects. And uh, the fire department has been uh, great to work with, we've, we've gone back and forth as we've issued our compliance reports. And um, any permitting that needed to be done, uh, we've always had meetings and, and discussion. Um, with that, I'll turn it over to Victoria, sorry about that interruption.
Not at all, thank you, Jim. Um, yep, so as Glenn said, um, their research and development program for the Sky vehicle. Involves use of gaseous hydrogen to test the fuel cells, which in turn power the EV tool. Um, so they've identified the quantity of gaseous hydrogen. And um, they were, they've identified that it needs to be stored on-site for their testing purposes. Um, and to talk a bit about the license requirement itself. Um, so the license is a state-driven requirement that is cited in the Mass General Law, chapter one forty-seven. And it is a requirement to hold a land license for the storage of flammable materials above certain thresholds. Um, five twenty-seven CMR, our state fire code, is the document which actually provides thresholds. Um, and for flammable gas, that threshold is ten thousand cubic feet. And um, Alakai intends to store close to thirty-two thousand cubic feet, which is the requirement, which triggers the requirement for a land license. Uh, so, we submitted an application for a permit for seventy thousand cubic feet. And that is to allow future flexibility for Alakai to lease an additional gaseous hydrogen trailer when their testing needs increase. Um, and to look at the license from a high level, the, the license acts as an umbrella. And it basically provides a cap to the amount of flammable gas which can be stored on-site. Um, and then under that umbrella, each individual gaseous hydrogen installation requires a hazardous material storage permit. Which is then approved at the fire department level. Um, so all the site-specific details such as um, separation, distances, um, co-compliance, and other safety features. Those are all reviewed in detail with the fire department at the permit level. Uh, so to talk a little bit about what we have submitted to the Board of Selectmen. Um, the original site plan that we submitted, it showed two different trailer locations and uh. At, at, at this point, so the, the project scope has been reduced to a single trailer location. And this trailer location was the, is the detailed site plan that we submitted late last week. And that site plan was what was reviewed in detail with the Conservation Commission during the hearing last week as well. Um, and we also submitted this revised site plan to the fire department, so um, all parties are on the same page. Um, the, our permit package to the fire department included a compliance report. That documents the ways in which the flammable gas storage location meets the applicable requirements of NFPA two. Which is the Hydrogen Technologies Code. Um, and this code is referenced by our state fire code for any hydrogen technologies. Um, Massachusetts actually adopts the two thousand eleven edition. But we have chosen to adopt the more recent twenty twenty edition. Because there have been so many, you know, changes in hydrogen technologies through the last ten or so years that we. We feel we want to make sure that we're incorporating all the relevant safety features that have been added to that document in recent years. Um. It is also worth noting that the gaseous hydrogen trailer that Alakai is leasing is a DOT certified. Vehicle for transport over public highways. And the tanks that are on the trailer are all ASME certified tanks. Which is the industry standard for hazardous material vessels. Um, so the last thing we wanted to mention was that this has been a collaborative effort between Alakai ourselves. Um, Don McPherson, the fire department, and the airport authorities, as well as, as well as the Selectmen's office, um. And this has been a collaborative effort to make sure that the installation meets all of the applicable requirements. Um, whether those come from the fire code or the FIA. Um, and we just, we greatly appreciate everyone's efforts to um, get us to the point where we're at right now. Thank you, um, John or Glenn or Don, do any of you have anything to add?
Is it uh, possible to share a screen to where the uh, we can put this site plan in front of it?
Please. Yes, you have the ability to um, share the screen.
Alright, can, can you give that to the organizations of the floor, I think she's been there, can you do that?
Yep, she should have access to it.
Okay. This uh, this vehicle is very unique, while she's looking for that, uh, and one thing about hydrogen, just a little bit of education in case somebody is not aware. Um, if it hasn't leaked, it goes straight up. It doesn't leak anywhere, it doesn't accumulate in poisonous explosive areas, and this shows when it's not to be opened. So, uh, if it did have a leak, from a, a local area standpoint, it virtually has no, um. Danger, um, of uh, you know, starting a ground fire or something of that nature, well, uh, if it leaks, it goes straight up. There's no accumulation on the ground like the toll, like the uh, propane or gasoline or anything like that. What you're seeing here is uh, the top of the middle of the screen is the name of the panel. And uh, the thing, uh, a little bit closer is, is a, a little brook. Um, and then where the dark black area is, is some jersey barriers. That we'll put in, because we are adjacent to uh, the grass runway. Uh, we're about fifty, almost seventy feet off the runway, but those are there just to protect. Uh, in case the unfortunate thing happens and our aircraft departs the runway. Inside between the trailer and the jersey barriers are ballards, which are on the right-hand side of the screen, the depiction of the ballards, how they're anchored. And the jersey barrier is worth is a absorbing, energy absorbing device in the event of catastrophic event with an aircraft, so. Uh, the trailer is protected and uh, the people in the aircraft actually have a better chance of survival. Of hitting the, the concrete barrier and giving, and then the, uh, the energy is absorbed before it hits the jersey barriers and stops it. Um, that's uh, kind of where it is, and then where it currently is right now, is an existing taxiway that's paved. And the Sky vehicle will be anchored kinda at the end of that taxiway, and that's where we do most of our testing, is at that location right here. Uh, does this give everybody a general idea of where we're sitting?
I think that there was uh, actually a, I think more of an aerial view that showed the relationship with some of the hangars. It might be helpful.
Yes, yep, I can pull that up as well, one second.
Yes, it is.
This is more fun when you're in person. I may know how to fix it, build it, and make it fly, but when it comes to getting this stuff to work on the screen, it's not my specialty.
I'm sorry, one second.
And uh, if the uh, Selectmen would like a tour of some, at some point in time of our facility and to see the Sky vehicle. Uh, please outreach to Don or myself and uh, we would love to uh. We, we don't wanna be open to the public per se, uh, but we will do a group of people, uh, as long as it doesn't disrupt our program very much.
That was the, that was the picture that I was thinking of.
Yeah, so this is the, the site plan that we originally submitted as part of our um, license application. And uh, as I mentioned before, so since submitting this, the scope of the project has been reduced um, to this single location right here. This one, um, this is no longer in the scope and we will not be pursuing that at this time. Um, so this is where it is, and you know, as, as Glenn mentioned, here's the, the brook. Um, there's the two hangar buildings. And the entrance to the Minuteman Airfield is up this way. And they're coming in here.
This uh, this keeps uh, it is about as far away from any public, uh, that it can be, the, the airfield itself is fenced. Um, most of the people that are on the airport are already responsible pilots and things of that nature, but it's again, uh, out away from everything.
Oh, Denise? My computer died.
We're trying to uh, we're trying to be as quick as possible.
And it's also important to note that the gate is secured, and it is uh, is by uh. Key code access, is that correct, Don?
Key code access is correct. Uh, would, would you have any other questions?
I have a question for, here.
Wanna come see it?
Anytime, uh.
It's pretty amazing.
We prefer to do it in the uh, the uh.
I'll come along.
The later part of the day, or weekend, would be preferred, uh, we do have a lot of that techy, uh, working on the vehicle. But uh, we really commend, uh, the people coming to take a look, we, we should love people to understand and see what they're doing, it's phenomenal.
I think you have a resident.
There's a resident here who needs. Do you want me to call her?
With your chair right now, yeah.
Uh, Rachel, did you wanna say something? Or whoever is there?
Uh, this, I. Yes, hello, Selectmen, uh, and Mr. Chair, I, I would like to hear from the fire chief, if you don't mind.
Sure, could you state your name and your address for the record, please?
Uh, Daniel Krantz, forty-three Hickory Lane.
Perfect, thank you. Is Joe on?
I, I'd just like to, as a director of butter and, and uh, uh, adjacent to Minuteman, I, I think the, the idea of, of hydrogen and as, as a uh. As a sustainable project is, is a fabulous idea, I'd just like to hear a little bit from the fire chief, just because I, I put my trust there. As to what his thoughts are on this and, you know, I know hydrogen is colorless, odorless, and highly flammable, and I don't know if there's a. I, I don't know enough about it to know if there's a, a blast radius or anything like that, but I would just be um, curious to hear from the. From the town as to what their thoughts are on that.
Joe, are you on?
Yes, I am.
Will you speak to that?
Yes, um, let me, can you hear me?
Mm-hmm.
I'm having a little trouble, okay, uh, yes, uh, to echo uh, uh, John and Victoria and Ken's words. We've had a great working relationship with, with Alakai since uh, our first meeting, uh, they've been involving us in every, every aspect of this. Uh, they're, they're also, uh, they have a wealth of knowledge through the codes, we've even, through our reference of, of working with our state fire marshal's office. We've had feedback from them that, uh, they, they're just a quality group that's, that's very educated in not only what they're doing. As a, as a, as a, you know, with the use of hydrogen in their operation. But also in the codes, their, their wealth of knowledge, so just to start with that. On the hydrogen piece itself, um, Captain Benoit is on here also, he's, he's my permitting uh, guru, so. I might have him step in if there's any other hard questions, but uh, truly, the, this hydrogen tanker that's going to be here, the one thing that really. Uh, holds on my end of it, uh, is that it's a DOT approved tanker. Uh, the DOT approved tanker holds some of the highest standards, I've been in hazmat in emergency management for my entire life and. Uh, when you're dealing with DOT approved, you're dealing with something that's at a higher standard than a tank that's even just gonna be. Installed on-site in most cases, cause it's made to be going up and down the road. Uh, in, in, it goes through collision testing and things of that sort, so. Uh, that piece of it, uh, the tanker in, in this single operation of, of the storage of it. Is a very, uh, very comforting in my piece of it, that it's, it's the same tanker that can drive up and down that Boxborough Road if it wanted to all day long. Without any permits other than what, you know, DOT and hazmat driver operator stuff would be, so. Uh, that piece of it holds a lot of, uh, a lot of support on my end. Uh, I've actually been educated through Ken mostly on hydrogen. In how it reacts to the environment and I've done some of my own research and I am very comfortable that, um. It's, it's understood now that the hazard essentially, any, any release is an automatic uh, release straight up into the environment, it does not. We don't have any hanging areas, when you did mention colorless, odorless, they have uh, added flame protection. Which is something that's uh, above the standard on the DOT tank, but since they're securing it. They've been working in a, a concept of putting uh, flame protection there. Which uh, assists us so that if we're going into a scene, we're not, we're not uh, caught off guard by a, a, a unrecognized. Um, hazard in the, in the area. So, what that does is that would be some triggers from some early notification if something goes on. But it also would work for us that if we're going down there for anything else, it would be detection of any sort of flames, cause it is a, it. You will not even recognize a flame coming off of it, if it's burning properly, I guess you would say. Uh, does that help in any way, or?
I think so, um, and, and thank you, chief, I appreciate that, and I appreciate that, that you and Captain Benoit have looked into it, that gives me a lot of, uh. It, it makes me feel better that you guys are comfortable with it, because I, I. That gives me a lot of uh, it, it makes me feel better that you guys are comfortable with it because I, I have uh from a town perspective, I have the trust in, in uh you looking out for us, so um. And if, if the opportunity is available to the selectmen um to maybe have a tour, I would, I, I would ask that maybe some of the director butters uh be given that opportunity as well, just to maybe better understand everything that's out there, but uh so, thank you.
That would be no problem at all, Mr. Krantz.
Hey, um, are there any other, any, does anybody else have any other questions or comments?
Yes.
Uh if you can identify yourself and uh your address?
Yep, Patrick Holmes, two four one Boxborough Road. I'm uh, I'm not a director butter, but I'm walking distance to the airfield. Um, I have a couple of questions, so the, the license that you guys are seeking is seventy thousand cubic feet, but it's gonna be the thirty-two thousand cubic foot trailer, I think I heard?
Yes, that's correct, oh right, because.
How, how long does that last? I mean thirty-two thousand cubic feet seems big to me. You know, that's, to put it into a unit that most people deal with, that's a quarter million gallons. Um, just volume wise, so it, it seems big to me. So how long does that last? How many, how many flights do you get out of that or how many years do we expect this stuff to be sitting there idle? And then my second question is, how does this gas get from wherever it's being generated to there? Are you generating it on site or do we now have tractor trailer traffic on our road?
Those are, those are both really good questions, thank you. Um, just to maybe take, take the first one, um so it does sound like a lot, definitely. Um, so the hydrogen is highly compressed in the cylinders. So this trailer is actually, realistically, it's about the size of a trailer that you would uh pull your lawn mower up onto and you can hook it up to back, back of the pickup truck. Um it's, it's approximately that size. Um it, it's a lot, it sounds like a lot because hydrogen is highly compressed inside these cylinders. Um so at a higher pressure, you can fit a lot more in your tank. And um to take your second question, uh the way that the hydrogen is being transferred to the fuel cells is via um vacuum jacketed hoses that are listed for that use for high pressure gaseous hydrogen use.
So is it, is it being, so it's not being generated on site, it's being trucked in from somewhere?
That's correct, yes.
Yes.
It's, it's being trucked in, yeah, so when the, when the cylinders are empty and the trailer is empty, uh it will be taken uh up uh the road, um and it will be uh refilled. Uh and Alakai can comment on, on that procedure.
Um, the trailer is actually about a sixteen foot biker pool flatbed, uh if that gives you a perspective on the trailer.
Yes, thank you.
The um, it, it is pulled behind a, typically a one-time pickup. Uh when it gets down to a certain level, we have it uh taken to Littleton and they will replenish it and then bring it back. And the, the volume that we use, um I, I can't tell you exactly because that kinda divulges some of what we're doing on testing, but um, but if, we're, we're in a research and development point, we could use a full trailer in uh about six days if we was really doing a lot of testing or it could sit there for two or three weeks. Uh, you know, in a full state. But it, it doesn't vent or anything, it ju, it'll sit there dormant until we connect to it and uh and plummet to our test vehicle. And then we allow the gas to go through the fuel cells and it generates electricity for us by doing that and then when it comes out of the fuel cell, it goes to its natural state, joining with oxygen and our exhaust is actually water vapor and water.
Okay, thank you.
I have a question, please, can you hear me?
And who is this?
Uh this is Bob Frederick, seven Westview Lane, Regency at Stowe. Can you hear me?
Yep.
Okay, first question um goes back to, I mean, I don't know much about the hydrogen and stuff, but I have a question and it was kind of asked earlier and I wanna pursue it myself more is either from the police chief, from whoever, as far as if this were to explode, and I don't know what it takes to explode, what is the blast radius since, you know, we at Regency are sitting very close to the airport? And I have a follow-up question after that then, if you want me to ask that, I'll ask that too.
Chief, dear.
So go ahead, answer that and then I'll follow up then, go ahead.
Uh our analysis um thus far has not included a, a blast model uh of, of a release and an ignition. Um, the code requires us to uh maintain certain separation distances uh which we, which we are meeting. Um, it also requires um what we call an electrically classified area, um which means that any electrical uh equipment conduit, anything like that um is, is designed and manufactured in such a way that uh hydrogen gas cannot get uh into uh conduit and devices. So for example, the flame detector um that was mentioned earlier, that flame detector itself is, is ordered and specified uh as electrically classified, so explosion proof, meaning that it can't, because it's sealed in such a way that it can't, um it can't be part of an, an ignition of hydrogen. Um, so the, the tank it's, uh the tank itself uh doesn't have any electronics on it. Um, the only thing would be the taillights of the trailer, which would be de-energized uh during any transfers.
Okay, but what if, and I heard you talk about having the ballards and the whatever wall and stuff in case a, a plane were to go into it? I mean, I don't, like I said, okay, I, I understand what you're saying with that piece there, there's nothing there, I think I understand, there's nothing to cause an explosion, but if a plane were to hit it, I mean, I don't know, what, what would cause an explosion of, of the nitrogen? And if it's a plane hitting it or something else that's not part of the trailer, uh what it, you know, goes back to the blast radius, cause you know, we're the neighbors, we're the ones that are sitting here next door. So is, is it possible for it to explode in this current situation? I guess that's the simplest way to ask it.
Yeah, I mean, our, our analysis and, and consulting thus far is not, is not considered an event such that, you know, a plane crashing into the trailer um and causing a release, an ignition and an explosion. Um, the, you know, a, a quantitative analysis of that, um, you know, could be done. Um, but it would involve, you know, failure rates uh and so on of different components of the trailer. Um, you know, and, and every scenario like that always involves a probability threshold uh as well as a severity, so um, but to answer your direct question, no, um, there has not been an analysis done uh as such.
Well, and then, and, and obviously if, you know, you were the person sitting next door to it, you'd want some, some knowledge on that. And I understand, I'm, understand the probability of that happening and I don't think that's understood right now, nor do we understand the blast radius. Um, and before I go on to my other question, if the, the company that's doing this, if they have any knowledge on that, I wish they would share it at this point in time, then I'll go on to my second question.
Uh, this is Bill Spillane, managing director of engineering at Alakai. The primary failure mode's gonna be a fire and that'll be measured in several feet where this fire is, uh non-explosion. Hydrogen less explosive than gasoline that you store in your garage. Concentrations to make gasoline explode are lower, lower requirements than for hydrogen. So from that point of view, you haven't had a gasoline explosion in your garage for your lawnmower gas. Uh you're looking at similar, similar here with the hydrogen, uh the feet, uh sorry, the hydrogen fire will be measured in feet. Based on that, the hangars that you can see in the picture shown on the screen by Victoria, we don't think they would be impacted at all. I mean, you would still see grass um in the wetland.
And just to, to add on to that, um the separation distances that are imparted in the code, um those are based on fire tests, so those are, those are based on analyses that people have done to determine what the appropriate separation distances are to adjacencies for that purpose. Um, so although we have not done a, a blast radius analysis, like John has said, we are following the code compliant separation distances for this analysis. Um, and you know, the code is built to make this a safe, uh a safe installation, so um that's just, you know, something to keep in mind. And um the other thing is that the, the trailer, the um, the tanks on the trailer, uh they are, they're built to release the hydrogen extremely quickly, they have pressured safety valves on them. Um, so if, if the tanks are ever heated from an external source, um the uh, the gas basically just releases from the, the tanks extremely quickly. Um, and they're designed not to explode if they are, um, if they're exposed to an external fire source. Um, and hydrogen is much lighter than air, so when it releases, it disperses extremely quickly.
Does that take care of your question? Oh, I'm still here, yes, I, my, my button tab button went off. Uh, thank you very much for that, I mean, it doesn't give me the kind of answer I'm looking for and I just ask that the selectmen, um they make sure that from their standpoint or that uh they're comfortable with that for, for the neighbors of that um and digging more into it. Um, I just wanted to raise that issue um myself. The second one is, and this is, you know, I haven't lived here that long and maybe this, this is probably a negativity of mine, but I wasn't aware that there was experimental planes or going up around over my house. I mean, I see other things, all kinds of other little flying things go over my house, but I haven't seen this box thing. And um that's obviously of concern to me just from the standpoint of having a neighborhood over here that was just built and that, you know, we got an experimental, I, I'm all for technology, believe me, from where I came from, from working and stuff, but having experimental things or knowing that's flying over my house, and I'm not sure that's what's happening, I just don't know. I've just heard it's experimental, so that's somewhat of a concern to me. And I guess I asked the question, it's been going on, so that's, obviously, I assume it's been approved by the, the town of Stowe, um, but that's also of a concern to me. So anybody that can enlighten me on what's going on with that and how it was approved, I would appreciate it. And that's my last question, thank you.
Uh next to Glenn off and I can uh, I can elaborate to that.
I'd love to weigh in at some point, it's fine.
The, the vehicle, uh aircraft that come in and out of the Stowe Airport, there's probably ten to twenty percent, and Don can correct me if I'm mistaken on that percentage, that are experimental aircraft, that's the, the nature of small airports. Um, and they are uh approved to be flying as they are by the FAA under certain special uh conditions. Uh, that's why they get called experimental and ours is in an experimental condition of research and development and it is restricted uh extremely on where it can be. And at the moment, it's uh only tethered, it doesn't do anything except lift off the ground so many inches and we do controlled testing. Later on, it will do testing, but it will be in the confinement of a given area that is authorized for us to be. And in that event, uh Bob, it will be in the perimeters of the airport. It will not be over any uh populated area at this time.
Thank, that's, thank you very much, I, I like the sounds of that answer much better than the blast radius, but no, I appreciate that. And as I say, I pardon my negativity for not having lived here that long, but uh that, that helps me, makes me a lot more comfortable. That's, that's all I have, thank you.
No problem, and another tidbit is, this particular vehicle is, in comparison to others of its size, is extremely quiet.
That's a plus two. Thank you.
If anybody else has uh input for this, if they can raise their virtual hand?
I, I don't see a button to raise a hand, but I have another question, sorry.
Who is this?
Patrick Holmes again at two four one Boxborough Road, still.
Yep.
Um, this is, this is only refueling your, your R and D vessel and we're not gonna open this up to air traffic as this technology evolves, is that correct?
That is correct, this is for our R and D effort, any public fueling stations would be a completely different permit, completely different meeting. This is purely for R and D um at the airport.
Okay, to the, to the selectmen, does, does granting this license pave the way for that in the future or is that a completely different process?
Completely different process.
Okay, thank you.
Going once, going twice, all right, um.
At some point, I, I'd like to make a comment.
Don, okay.
Maybe, maybe before you close the hearing, I guess. Answers to Bob Frederick's questions would probably be best explained if he would come down to the airport, where we could talk at length about the FAA definition of an experimental aircraft and what that really means. So I would welcome Bob to come by, perhaps uh I can get in touch with him or he could call me. Uh regarding the explosive uh nature of hydrogen, it's my understanding that the hydrogen kept in the tank is liquid hydrogen and there is no oxygen in the tank to create an explosion or else it would, it would be burning all the time. Um, if the tank were to rupture, the gas would go up in the air and it, it might create a flame, but not an explosion. For that tank to explode, there needs to be hydrogen inside the tank along with the, I mean, oxygen inside the tank along with the hydrogen and that simply doesn't happen. Uh, in terms of risk, uh your homes are pretty far away, Bob, compared to our buildings on the airport, but uh just to give you some degree of comfort, I would say that if there is any risk associated with this small trailer pulled behind a pickup truck, it would be on the highway and where it's going past cars a few feet away at a closing speed of thirty or forty or fifty miles an hour. Uh, and, and to comfort you on, on that risk, I would take you back to uh Joe Landry's original comments about the tank being DOT certified and what a high threshold of certification uh that requires. This tank wouldn't go down the street if there was a chance that it was gonna explode in an accident. And there's even less likelihood that it would ever explode apart from the property. Um, there's never been a plane run off that runway in that area, so I think compared to traffic on the street, you drive to Littleton, maybe go by a hundred cars, uh I don't think we have a hundred planes a year land on that turf runway. So it's, it's a very safe spot and that's why we've chosen it. Um, and, and as far as inviting the selectmen and anybody else listening tonight, um, I, I feel a little embarrassed that we haven't had you out already, but there was this thing called COVID that came along. Normally we have wings and wheels events and we have lots of public activity and, and invite people for tours. I haven't even had a chance to meet the new town administrator yet, although we have started talking about it. Um, small groups get, are welcome to come by appointment to see this machine. I would suggest that you arrange that through Glenn. And, and as soon as uh COVID lights, lightens up and we can have bigger groups here, we, I'm sure there'll be a time for an open house or some kind of a formal presentation to bring more people in. And uh that's it, thanks, thanks for your time tonight. Don, this is Bob Frederick again and stuff, thank you for that.
Hi, Bob.
Hi.
No, I appreciate, I appreciate.
Bob, there was another comment.
We have like some other things we need to do, can we just move on?
Gotta, gotta try to move this along, guys, um.
Thank you.
All right, thanks, Don, um.
Thank you.
I'll, that was last comment, so I'll take a motion to close the public hearing.
I move to uh, I move at the public hearing for a license for flammable storage at Minuteman Airfield. I move to, uh, I move at the public hearing for a license for flammable storage at Minuteman Airfield be closed.
Uh, this requires a roll call vote. Jim?
Is there a second?
Second. Thank you. Thanks, Denise.
Aye.
Aye. Megan?
Aye.
Courtney?
Aye.
Ellen?
Aye.
Chair votes aye, public hearing is closed.
Oh, let's see.
Um, can you change, can you change the screen?
Yep. If, if you could take that screen down, please.
Thank you.
Thanks, Don. All right. Um, just to continue on this conversation, I, I'm comfortable with, uh, the installation, what Chief Landry has said. Is everybody prepared to take a vote on this?
Um, I have a couple of questions. Sorry. Um, Denise, I know there was something in our packet about septic issue, questions of septic. Did the Board of Health ever like actually look at the plan and weigh in on it? Cause I know they were like, we wanna see it, blah, blah, blah.
So they did. They want to see the final license and the final plan that you agree on. So if you support their plan, they'll just double check, but there shouldn't be any issues with it.
Okay. Um, Don, I am glad that you, uh, talked about airplanes that have potentially overshot the area because that was the only question that I had um, about that. And, um, as far as, uh, the gentleman's comment about, um, experimental flight, uh, that neighborhood abuts industrial land. Um, and so whatever's permitted on that land is what can happen on that land. And so, um, I would just, even if you're new in town, I would just double check. Um, cause there are, we have industrially zoned, um, areas in town. And so just be aware of that. And that's all.
Courtney, comments, questions?
Yeah, I have, um, heard from a few people, just concerns, um, on windy Boxboro Road about additional traffic. And I understand this sounds like it's a, a quiet thing at the moment. Um, I didn't really understand how often, um, you know, I totally get that it, that this is experimental and so you're, you're in development. Um, could you just clarify how often you think, um, you may be having a truck go out to, to refill these cylinders?
Uh, certainly, this is Bill Spillane, managing director of engineering at Alakai. Uh, so we talked about a truck. This is typically around like a Ford F-250, um, Chevy Silverado 2500 size. Uh, during high test periods, it could be as much as every week or every other week, once every other week or once every week. In low test periods, uh, once a month to once every two months, somewhere in that.
Great. Um, and I guess, I guess I look forward to a tour because then I can ask lots of other questions about these vehicles. And I'm very curious, um, and, uh, it's, it looks like really exciting technology to be so clean. Um, um, so thank you for offering us to have a tour and to learn more.
You're welcome. And, uh, we love showing off the vehicle. So come on by.
Ellen, questions, comments?
Just really quick question or comment, really. I, I, my really only question when I first read this was like, I don't know the heck out of anything to do with hydrogen. So, um, totally appreciate the fire chief being very clear on, on how he fit into this and how he reviewed it. Um, thank you for this presentation. It was really interesting. And I agree with Courtney. I can't wait to see more about what this is all about. And Don, thank you also for, for your clarity on, on sort of the rules of, we can't forget there's lots of rules around FAA that we get to be oblivious to. So thank you for doing that.
Jim?
Um, sounds like a fascinating technology. I understand the environmental, um, upside of it and I like that. Um, two very quick questions. Number one, and this is for anybody from Alakai or their consultants. Um, if you've scaled back the size of your project from the two tanks, from seventy thousand cubic feet to thirty-two thousand cubic feet, should we be approving storage of thirty-two thousand cubic feet tonight?
Hi, this is Victoria from Arip. Um, I just wanted to clarify. So the reduction in scope was not actually to reduce the number of trailers. Those storage locations were intended to provide some flexibility on where the single trailer was going to be located. Um, but that has been since reduced to, they're just putting it in that one storage location. So we're not talking about any other location. Um, the seventy thousand cubic feet is to provide flexibility in the future if they ever want to size up their trailer. Um, and I should mention that if that ever does happen, um, we are going right back to the fire department and, you know, starting all of our, um, collaboration efforts again to make sure that, um, whatever we're doing for the new trailer is again compliant and safe.
And just to clarify, this is John Eisenberg from Arip again. Um, the license, um, application says seventy thousand cubic feet of stored hydrogen. And as Victoria mentioned earlier, that's stored under high pressure. That's very compressed. Um, and so the permit that then will be in front of Captain Benoit and Chief Landry to review, that application will be for the exact amount that Alakai is, is going to store, um, which in this case is thirty-one thousand seven hundred and fifty cubic feet. So at, that, and Victoria's absolutely right. At such a time as Alakai wants to increase the quantity that's stored via a bigger trailer, um, they would need to go back in front of the fire department for, uh, any increase to the permitted amount. Um, we just wanted them to have some flexibility under that, you know, seventy thousand cubic foot umbrella, um, to be able to, uh, lease a larger trailer if they need to.
Does that entail a, a, a far larger scope of operation or a different scope of operation?
I'd like Glenn or Bill to answer that.
I guess I'm not sure why we shouldn't approve thirty-two thousand cubic feet. And if there comes a time when the operation has changed such that you need the additional, somebody's gonna have to help me with the math here, but I guess it's, uh, forty, thirty-eight thousand?
Thirty-eight thousand, yeah.
You can come back for an additional and we can do a quick check on how things are going. And why would that not work?
Our, our vehicle typically operates off of liquid hydrogen because liquid is even more dense than the compressed gas. So the compressed gas is for R and D reasons for low power testing. Occasionally, um, at full power testing while tied to the ground. While we're doing the low power testing and system checkouts, our hydrogen usage is much lower. But once we go for, uh, full power runs to test all the systems to verify that it's safe to take off and actually fly, uh, outside the airport, we will burn hydrogen, gaseous hydrogen at a much higher rate. We'll, we'll cycle through these trailers at a high rate. And we'd want to ideally be able to consume the total, the total, uh, seventy thousand square feet, uh, cubic, sorry, cubic feet of hydrogen in a continuous run. So we can stress test our system before we ever leave the safety of the ground or the confines of the airport. The second reason why we want the flexibility of having approximately double the amount of the storage deals with how we get the hydrogen. And this is brought to us, uh, from a storage facility, sorry, facility in Lipton, Massachusetts. Sometimes the distributor wants to drop off a trailer and then pick up the trailer at the end of the day on their way back. And we'll end up with a situation where we have two trailers sitting next to each other, one empty, one full. Uh, but we'd be permitted for both.
Okay.
Yeah.
I'm, I'm comfortable with this happening.
Well, I, he in particular helped me when he was talking about the change in scope or the change in activities. Um, and one small thing, I know Alakai has been there for a while. May I assume you've been storing hydrogen but below the ten thousand cubic foot threshold?
That's right.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Anybody else? Questions? I'm comfortable with, with it. You know, I think the main thing that I'm seeing in this is that, you know, the, uh, these trailers could drive up and down Boxboro Road all day if they wanted to without any kind of permit.
Can I just ask one question of the fire chief? Joe, are you still there?
I must be lost on.
Yes, ma'am.
Oh, hi, Joe. Um, I didn't see in the, in the materials, any specific conditions from you. Is that correct?
Uh, let me check with the captain. There was nothing that's above and beyond because everything that they've put in place, it meets all the codes and standards. JP, have you, did you have anything additional?
No, that is correct. Um, as mentioned, I did a site visit of where the trailer is going and felt comfortable with the distances, uh, from both the buildings and the runway. They, both companies have gone above, uh, requirements that we follow. Uh, so I feel confident with what they have presented to us so far.
Thank you. Mr. Chairman, do you?
Um, I'm willing to take a motion.
Mr. Chair, I move to approve the license for installation of a seventy thousand cubic foot gaseous hydrogen trailer for Alakai Technologies at Minuteman Airfield at three oh two Boxboro Road in Stowe.
Second.
One in favor? Aye?
Aye.
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 So, uh, Courtney and Ellen were both aye and so it's unanimous. All right.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. And I'm looking.
Thank you as well. I appreciate.
I am looking forward to seeing it.
Thank you. Thank you all for coming.
Next up, we have a.
Can't surprise me, yes.
Thank you.
Next up, we have a presentation by, uh, Minuteman Vocational Regional Technical School. Uh, Dr. Boquillen.
Good evening.
Sorry that, uh, we're a little bit later than we planned.
No, I tell you, that was fascinating stuff. I'm gonna get my engineering kids over there.
Hmm.
I bet you they'll let them in too.
And get them to Minuteman. Uh, let's see, I'm gonna, uh, make sure, here I go. Okay. Well, hi, everybody. Alice is with me. Um, I'm, uh, happy to be with you. Excuse me while I play around here. Okay. Everyone can see that? Little friendly nods are good. Yeah, thank you. Okay. So our budget, uh, for the FY fiscal twenty-two year here is preparing for reality. Um, overall, our operating budget is up, uh, two point four percent. Um, our operating capital debt is up about four hundred thousand. And the big increase in this year's budget is the MSBA project debt, uh, which is up about twenty-six percent from last year. The, the good news is it's peaking, uh, for a few years and it doesn't go up for quite a bit. But, um, we've been preparing folks for this in regards to the MSBA, uh, project debt service. Um, so that's part of the, the big increase. Uh, our revenue assumptions, uh, that we've made in the budget are assumptions. We base them on, uh, revenue projections that were done earlier in the fall. And you can see we're estimating a reduction in chapter seventy-eight. That's because Belmont left the district and so their minimum local contribution is not included any longer. We now have nine member towns. We do collect money from Belmont on the, uh, tuition line though. Uh, regional transportation aid is down because when COVID hit in March, we stopped running our buses. We had a contract that allowed us not to pay for services we were not, uh, being rendered. So the reimbursement is gonna be down because it's based upon our actual expenditures. Uh, prior tuition is down a bit because we have, um, fewer out of district students that we're collecting from this year. And, uh, the capital fee is down for the same reason. So we've made up the difference in that assumed reduction in revenue by, uh, increasing the amount of current year tuition. In other words, tuition that we would collect in FY twenty-two um, and, uh, the prior year capital fee that's been remaining. So House One, which was submitted by the governor, um, the revenue is, uh, more optimistic than this. But when, uh, we're using a more conservative approach in a, a revenue, if they do go up, uh, the assessments would be voted by the school committee and they can go down. Assessments cannot go up. Some assumptions we've made in our budget, we feel that some form of COVID response is gonna be with us, hopefully for not a whole school year. But we anticipate some kind of a hybrid model between, uh, remote and in-person learning. Our safety and health measures are gonna continue. As I mentioned, we have, we're assuming some reduced state aid with the, the, uh, stimulus bill that was just passed and about to be signed by the president. Uh, we're hopeful that that will be helpful to all of us as well. As I mentioned, our final bonding for the MSBA project will be secured in FY twenty-two. Um, the other assumption that we've made, and it's not an assumption, student interest in, uh, high quality career and technical education is, um, continuing to increase dramatically. We are currently, um, beyond our design enrollment. Pool is designed to hold six hundred and twenty-eight. We have six hundred and thirty-four kids. Next year, we're projecting about six hundred and ninety kids. So we're looking at ways to cost effectively increase the capacity of the school. This is a little bit more detail as of today, I believe, about where we're at with, um, applications. You can see our total applications from member town communities, from the nine member towns is at two hundred and seventy. Um, out of district applications, about fifty eligible out of district applications, forty-seven, uh, out of district applications that are not eligible. In other words, those students have available to them in their town of residence, some form of, uh, chapter seventy-four, state-approved vocational education. So they're not eligible, but they still apply. We don't process them, but, um, uh, we count them. So we're looking at having a waitlist next year, uh, for in-district students, somewhere between twenty-five and forty. Um, our October one enrollment for the freshman class, we're anticipating at two hundred. That's the maximum amount we can take at this point in time. So, um, enrollment is increasing and our school is too small. Some of our assumptions, so obviously these drive our priorities next year, protecting students with that. We are starting our animal science program this fall in vet assisting. We're also expanding our logistics engineering, uh, program, which will exist in, uh, our warehouse space that's in the building. As I mentioned, our priority is to try to increase our capacity within the existing building. We're gonna hopefully be closing out the MSBA project. Our athletic fields project has begun. It should be completed by the fall. We've had no home fields for three or four years now. And when those athletic fields are done and COVID has been, whatever it's gonna be, hopefully our, our facilities rental and revenue opportunities will start to ramp up. Some of the drivers in the budget, there's a, a cost of living increase for staff. Next year, we're in the second year of a three-year agreement, two point two five percent. In year three, it's two percent. We're experiencing an increase in electrical and utility costs that frankly, we didn't anticipate. We can, uh, account for some of that in our, the fact that we're in a COVID environment. We have fewer bodies in the building and we're running the air exchange at its maximum level. Um, but we're tracking this pretty closely. And this is based upon our actual bills that we've received over the last year and a half. Although we've never been in the new building for a full year with a full complement of students and staff. Property insurance is up. We've had some reduction in health insurance. I've never said that before, uh, but that's because, uh, lower FTE counts in our staff. And our transportation, um, is down because we had a competitive bidding process where the actual bids were below what we estimated. in this fiscal year twenty-one. So, Stowe's preliminary assessment is one point five eight billion. That's an increase of almost two hundred and ninety-five thousand. And when you look at it component-wise, the assessment is based upon the minimum local contribution, an assessment for transportation, uh, our operating assessment, debt and capital. The debt and capital includes a contribution to our capital stabilization fund, uh, which was established, I think, in FY sixteen. It also includes a payment on some additional borrowing of one point nine million to complete the lighting in the three new fields that are being built now. And then Stowe's portion of the project is about three hundred and forty thousand, which uh Stowe voted to exclude, but we're still canning it. So, you can see Stowe's enrollment has been increasing somewhat dramatically, up about twenty-four percent over last year, up over a hundred and twenty percent from two years ago. Um, and that's the, the, the beauty of the new regional agreement is that we're using a four-year rolling average as that component of determining the assessment. So, um, otherwise, we'd be in, Stowe and some other communities would be in for a very big spike. So, we're pleased that students are availing themselves to Minuteman. Our special ed enrollment continues to be high. Um, our students do very well. Uh, again, Minuteman has, uh, any one year, we're probably number one or number two in terms of the percentage of students receiving an I, services from an IEP and we anticipate that will continue. Uh, just to review, the overall operating budget's up about two and a half percent, et cetera. Just, just to give people an idea of what folks who are not members are going to be paying next year. Now, some of these numbers are based on FY twenty-one because the commissioner hasn't set the tuition rate for next year. Our special ed fee will be a little bit lower because we have more special ed students that we're spreading the fee over. Um, the capital fee, we submit our calculations to the department and they approve it. Um, and then if we've, the average transportation on a student from out of district is about thirty-two hundred. Again, special ed is a big part of our budget. This was uh, as a couple of years ago. I use that because it's been posted on the Department of Ed website. Just to review uh the capital debt increases, um, athletic fields, ESCO and renovations. As I mentioned, there's a total payment on the uh bonding for the athletic lighting is about a hundred and eighty thousand. The school building project debt, we're going to be borrowing the final amount. And then our capital stabilization fund, we're increasing that contribution by about two hundred and sixty thousand. You remember the capital stabilization fund, we established it a few years back because we anticipated that the MSBA formula for furnitures, fixtures and equipment for a vocational school was going to be woefully inadequate, which it is woefully inadequate. But what we didn't anticipate was our success at getting grant funds to purchase equipment. We've received about one point three million in uh capital skills grant. And so, our capital stabilization fund balance is pretty healthy and the school committee voted back in June to use that ca- capital stabilization fund to put towards our three athletic fields. And the reason we have money for the three athletic fields is that we didn't spend all of the money that was appropriated for uh, under the uh MSBA project through some intensive management and good oversight. We got almost four million dollars that we anticipated having left over that went for the uh, the fields. This is just a little bit of a breakdown of what I just described. We still have an ESCO lease, which we have three more years of payments on. That ESCO lease was to um replace electrical switchgear in the old building as well as some um energy saving and really some safety things that needed to be done. Um, and all sixteen towns are still paying on that ESCO lease. So, even the towns that left, we're happily sending them a bill every year for that portion. And a bill for tuition. Um, this is just an outline of the athletic fields. Um, we're starting in earnest this week as the weather's getting nice. Expect to be substantially complete this fall. Um, our, as I mentioned to the select board, uh, a few months ago when we were talking about the athletic fields, uh, we're going to be setting aside a hundred and sixty-eight thousand dollars a year in our capital stabilization fund. So, when the fields need to be replaced in ten or twelve years, we won't have to come back to the towns for that. Oh yeah, I am happy to also report that we signed the contract with the, for a photovoltaic roof installation. Um, we had always anticipated this money coming, but we had, to kind of go back to the drawing board, when a company we'd been working with pulled out for business reasons. And by uh securing this contract, we also secure two million dollars of reimbursement from the MSBA for LEED certification. And that uh is going through permitting now. Um, it will, construction will start on that over the summer and it will be operating in October. It's a twenty-year lease purchase. We'll be saving between twenty-five and thirty-five thousand dollars a year on our uh electric bill. OPEC, so for the last few years, um, we've been putting a very small amount, fifty thousand dollars a year. FY twenty-one and next year, we'll increase that to sixty thousand. Uh, the long-term strategy is when the ESCO debt comes off our uh, off our payment schedule, that we would apply much of that to OPEC, uh, beginning in FY twenty-six. These are the reserve funds. Um, as I mentioned, the capital stabilization. And we have an OPEC trust fund, so we're earning a little bit of interest on the money that's in there. And overall, if you put it all together in one bundle, the budget's up eight point four percent over this year. And as I mentioned, most of that increases in the uh bonding for the MSBA project. And there's Stowe's assessment and the increase. Questions?
Thank you for the presentation. Um, Jim, any questions?
Dr. Buck Willen, thank you for speeding through that. I appreciate it. No, I don't, other than um, Stowe's enrollment has doubled in the past two years.
Yes.
Other than, other than presumed um desire to go to the newly constructed school, do you know of any reason for that?
Well, what parents are saying and what, uh, I, I think, first of all, high-quality career and technical education, I think is becoming more and more a viable consideration for families. Um, I think certainly the last few years and the spiraling costs of post-secondary education in general, families are starting to, to look at different ways students can be prepared for their post-secondary careers. And one of the things that we emphasize with parents is that Minuteman helps kids discover their purpose so that when they do go on to post-secondary, they know why they're there. And uh, the return on investment from the kids coming out of Minuteman, um, I think is, is high. The costs of college are crippling young people with student debt. Um, I think folks want to avoid that. There's a more of an intentional look at the costs. And I think people are realizing that you can get a lot for your money in a high-quality vocational technical school. The building has helped for sure. Um, but you know, overall, we had three hundred and seventy-one applications. I mean, that's twice as many as we have room for. Um.
Thank you.
We're, we're, we're no longer the best kept secret, I guess.
Thank you.
Megan?
Um, no, I thank you for the presentation. I don't have any questions other than what you, um. Yeah, I, I think my only con- concern is that it seems like you are um, already starting to grow out of this space. And so, what, what have you, and maybe this is a discussion for another time. Um, but have you started to think about what that looks like? Um.
Yes.
Okay. And we can, we can certainly talk about this another time. I don't, I don't know that that's.
It's, it's probably uh more appropriate for another time at this, at this point, I would maybe.
Thanks. Yep. So, I'll, I'll reach out to you separately. And Alice, I can do that as well. I know we're only.
Yeah, and I just want to say, I've been in two meetings with Dr. Buck Willen today where we discussed that, I'm links.
Yeah, yeah. Excellent.
And I think it's, it's interesting to me that um MSBA should be talked to because I think, you know, they put a lot of caps on how much we can build and then, I mean, that happened at Center School too. We were pretty much at capacity probably the minute we grew because, or opened
Right.
because of their denial of what growth, you know, terms they, they need to look at. So, um, but uh, I just, you know, I just have to say, I'm, I think people know I'm a pretty big fan of Minuteman without having kids having gone there. I think um, just the creativity you're doing, I mean, getting the grants, I, I'm, I'm going to be asking to show if they're doing anything like that in terms of getting grants for, to, to offset the costs to the public about the education. Um, I'm psyched to hear about the PV roof, you know, in terms of both the LEED certification, but the, the two million dollar kickback from MSBA, that's huge. And, um, and it's a great learning tool and given where we are with climate change, you're right on top of it. So, um, I think, I think that as you, when Jim asked a question about why, why are you getting the growth, it is the secret's out, you know? People now are paying attention to how much you're doing over there and that it's not just about the, the uh, the trade work. It's, I mean, the academics are getting just as good praise as their trade work. So, thank you.
Courtney? Or, I'm sorry, Alice?
Hi, um, I, I wanted to ask if Dr. Buck Willen could highlight some of the adult, adult stuff that's going on at night because I'm not certain that you all know about the programs.
Yeah, let's, let's, let's see if Courtney's got any questions first and then we, we'll just circle back to that quickly. Courtney?
Yeah, one of the, we have something. Well, Courtney, yes.
Thanks. I think my uh colleagues have asked all sorts of good things and thank you for the thorough presentation. I do know what Ellen says. I, I'm just a big fan of, of what you've done and I'm delighted you have a PV roof going in as well and, um.
Great.
Yeah.
Well, you'll like to hear this then too. Our Minuteman Technical Institute, which is our post-secondary institute, we just received a hundred and ten thousand dollar grant um to train uh folks in carpentry and in uh advanced manufacturing. And last night, we had started, we're working with um, I want to get the name right because I. I think I'm in a, I don't know. We're working with, we have ten new carpentry students who started last night, all women, um, mostly of color. And we're uh working with the two unions, uh, the North, North Atlantic States Carpenters Union, um, as well as some mass career centers. Uh, we have a waiting list to get into that program already. Um, and this next week, we're going through something called COE accreditation, C-O-E, the Council for Occupational Education. And once we get through that accreditation, hopefully uh receive it by spring, students who apply to Minuteman Technical Institute at night will be able to access federal student loans and Pell Grants to help offset the tuition. Um, so we're already taking applications for next year. We, at night, we offer advanced manufacturing, metal fabrication, electrical, uh plumbing, uh cosmetology. And we're going to be expanding into, I believe, uh, oh, automotive tech, yes, yep.
Hey, I just wanted to make sure everybody knows about that because so many people now, we all know people who are trying to get a different kind of job, lost their job, need a different job. And this is an opportunity that, you know, it's sort of like the high school, who knew about it? Now, now everybody knows about it. They need to know about this too.
That's great.
Yep. Thank you very much. Very, very good presentation. Um, thank you and uh, we will now be moving on. Look forward to seeing you guys in the future.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, see ya.
Bye.
Bye.
Yeah, thanks, Alice.
Um, next up, we have uh, uh Chief Solisi coming again to talk about the police hiring and promotional process overview.
Actually, can I start that? It's more my topic.
Oh, sure.
Um, thank you. Um, so, uh, Mike and I have been working on a policy for hiring. Uh, this is one step in trying to comply with police reform and the requirements of training and uh vetting the candidates and making sure we have the uh correct candidates coming in to apply. So, we put together this new process. Um, you can see, this is the patrol officer process. Um, it was posted on March first. Uh, Mike, you can let me know how many, we've gotten twenty-something?
Uh, we're up to thirty-one.
Oh, thirty-one, excellent.
Wow, excellent.
Um, so, we have put together a hiring committee. Um, it's two residents that are unaffiliated with any board, employee, anything. Uh, we have the detective, the lieutenant and a dispatcher. Um, they will review the candidates and make recommendations to uh Mike and I. And we will then go through the remainder of the process, conduct the background check and then we will forward a recommendation to this board. Um, one of the nice things to know is the hiring committee, when they review their applications and the resumes, they will be absent of any personal information. So, they will be blindly reviewing applications. They will not know who they're meeting with until they come in to interview, uh, which is a great step in, um, again, sort of taking out any stigma of bias or anything like that. They won't know name, gender, et cetera. Um, we have discussed it and we are prepared to have um one candidate, hopefully academy-trained, but we can afford to have another one non-academy-trained. That has been one of the issues with getting um more diverse police forces, that not everyone has the ability to be academy-trained when they come on board. So, we've talked about it, we've looked at the budget and we can afford to have, as long as one is academy-trained, we can afford to send one to the academy to make sure we get some um more diverse candidates that will apply. And as Mike said, we have thirty-one candidates, so we're definitely getting people interested in coming here to work for Stowe. Um, the sergeant process will be fairly similar, only we will swap out some of the members of the committee because anyone who is planning to apply obviously will not be part of the hiring committee. So, um, Mike has reached out to uh Martha and the COA as an outreach worker with her background to participate on that committee, which I think will give a nice variety again of um people doing that first round. They will still then be recommended to Mike and I and then we will then recommend to this board. Um, anything I'm missing, Mike, that you want to add in?
Uh, just on these, on the sergeants' process, there may be another step of some area police chiefs uh doing a secondary interview
Yes, that's.
uh, to get some leadership, uh, interview questions, qualities to be pulled out of, of the candidates that they, that put in for that position. Uh, and then as far as, I, I'm really excited. I just want to say I'm really excited about the, the patrol position that we have going on right now. Um, just seeing the, the people come in from all sorts of different backgrounds, uh, is, is really welcoming because uh before we were so, we were limited ourselves and now we're not. And um, all different communities that people are putting in from and it's uh, it's very welcoming to see that people are, are applying to our community and they want to work here.
Yep, so this is just an overview of, you know, the process that we're going through. Um, again, it, it brings things up to a more professional. Yep, so this is just an overview of, you know, the process that we're going through. Um, again, it it brings things up to a more professional level and follows a lot of the police reform requirements. I mean, you can see it's very thorough, the process that is, um, taking place. So if anyone has any questions?
I have a question.
Ellen?
Um, and you went over quickly, in terms of the hiring committee, um, I mean, what I was struck by when we were doing the the chief hiring was having people who actually have some idea of what it takes to be achieved and that's why we had like a chief from a different town and so. I'm wondering, in terms of residents, are you looking for people who have some knowledge of law enforcement? I mean, I I guess I'm concerned what what would qualify a a a resident to be on the committee?
So we are not looking for someone with police experience, it's more to get the, um, public input to be more open in the process. Um, you know, they're really vetting the candidates for to make sure they've met the criteria, make sure they've passed the physical test, make sure they interview well, um, have a conversation with them. Ultimately, that's where uh Mike and I would come in is then, you know, if they give three to five candidates, then we would meet with their sort of top three to five based on all of their criteria that they're putting forward.
Mm-hmm.
Um, there is still on the committee though, there is still the lieutenant, there is the de- uh detective and there is a dispatcher that obviously work daily with uh the chief and they've worked with many chiefs to have a an idea of what they're looking for as far as departmental.
Great, thank you.
You're welcome.
Uh, Megan?
Um, I wanna say I absolutely love the idea of blinded resumes. I think it is just phenomenal, um, because I think it takes that initial bias out and I think, um, just being judged on your resume um and not a name or gender, um, I I'm excited to see what what um what can come in, so. This is great. Oh, sorry, and I wanted to speak to Ellen's, um, point about the, um, the resident. I was the select board person. Um, having no knowledge. I mean, I will be honest with you, no knowledge of it, um, and I think we did a pretty good job. Chief, getting you hired, so, um, so I do feel like there's something to be said for having a lot of different voices at the table um, who are maybe looking for, um, looking for all sorts of different things, so I do appreciate that, definitely.
Yeah.
Will we count Mike as as our sixth selectman now?
Uh, I think I told you, it's gonna be a long year, we got a lot of chairs.
Get used to it, pull up a chair.
Um, two things, I actually like the idea of bringing in a non-law enforcement, uh, person, it makes it less, for lack of a better word, clubby or clubby appearing. Um, and you want that, I think, non-professional law enforcement perspective, you don't want to be all people have no idea about what about what law enforcement is. My, um, the main comment I wanted to make, if we're gonna move, we're thinking about moving to a model where we're going to pay for or subsidize the academy tuition. Um, I would certainly support an actual line item in in the budget for that, so it's a little less catch as catch can than the whether the person you happen to get hiring hired with needs the money or not.
Mm-hmm.
Um, I'd rather see that be an actual policy, you know, if we're gonna pay for it, if it's needs-based, I don't know. I do like the idea though of of getting away from that old model of expecting that every new officer will have funded his or her way through the academy, so.
Yeah.
I think I I during my interview, I also stated that like we should look at creating a new posi- position of like a student officer. Um, you know, so that can be different, so it's gives us more options, it's what we can go through.
Mm-hmm.
Um, when we're looking at people to hire.
Okay. Courtney?
Thank you. I just. Sorry, sometimes on muting is harder than others, um. I'm just really grateful for your for your inclusivity, you know, for the whole way that you that the tone of this process, um, again, the blind resumes and and, um, uh, including people that may not have been to academy yet. I think it's great and having civilians on the on the committee to choose uh candidates, I think it's great, thank you.
You're welcome, thank you.
As I told you earlier today, Mike, uh, I'll see how this works out because I think we have done fairly well over the last few years with a different model, but I I'm I'm definitely open to, uh, to this. One of one of the things that, um, uh, I'm not sure I hundred percent agree on is, you know, funding somebody through the academy. Um, you know, when we were looking at John Butler, he had a good track record with us. You know, he'd had sixteen years in and if we're going to start, um, you know, putting people through the academy, I I suppose I would be looking to make sure that they're gonna give us a five-year commitment also, something like that, and really make sure that they're gonna be a good fit. Um, I know that over the last few years, we have had problems finding people. Um, but I'm I'm like I say, I'm keeping an open mind right now and I'll I'll see how this goes, but, you know, I just figured it's worth worth mentioning it at this point.
I appreciate the those comments, thank you. Um, I I think that the group that we have doing the initial review is going to do a a good job at reviewing and making sure that we have uh not only a good fit for our department, but a good open-minded officer for what what Stowe needs and uh who will really care about the community. So, um, if they didn't understand the investment we're putting into them, my hope would be that, uh, that they would stay here for for years, but we'll we'll see how it goes.
Yep. Megan?
Um, I also feel like if we are, um, if we are offering the option to pay for someone through the academy, we are not limiting people by their own financial, um, by their own financial constraints, right? They could be the perfect candidate and they could not have had the resources to be able to get through the academy. So I think that opening that up and us being able to do that, um, just allows for, again, a greater diversity in the candidate pool. And so I I think it's fantastic that we are opening it up that way.
Like I said, I keep an open mind on it, but, you know, so, thank you. I.
Well, I think, I mean, for me, the big thing is that this whole field needs to be rethought in many ways. And whether Mike, Mike and Denise hit exactly the right note off the bat, I don't know. But what I like is that they're clearly giving it a lot of thought. From what I see right here, I I I I don't know why not to do it this way. Um, I I think it's an improvement on the old model that I've seen. Um, and we can talk about details of, you know, payment for the for the academy, whether it's needs-based, whether you pay part or all, so they have skin in the game, who knows? Uh, but just to be thinking about talking about these issues, I think is a is a step in the right direction.
I'd just like to add that I think if, um, if we were to pay tuition for someone to go to academy and they said, okay, thanks, see you later, um. You know, these, I don't think the percentages are high on on getting taken for a ride, first of all, and second of all, um, I would say that's probably not the candidate for us and, um, goodbye. So, um, you know, it's a process of self-selection in that fashion.
Yeah. Well, it's it it's not so much, I I'm not actually worried so much about the actual tuition, which I think is fairly modest, three or four thousand dollars. It's the paying somebody for six months without them while they're going to school. Which is going to be significant, you know, it it's gonna be forty thousand dollars, thirty, forty thousand dollars. So that, you know, that that is a serious investment. And when we ended up, we were going to have, we were gonna sponsor John Butler to.
I don't know who this is.
To to go through it. Um, yeah, he was actually gonna pay the tuition so that he had some skin in the game.
So, conversation for another day.
Yep.
Yeah, thank you.
I agree. So.
Yep, so this was just again to give you the overview, it's posted, resumes are coming in and, um, we will start, uh, the process next week with the, um, getting the hiring committee together and really starting the process, so.
And.
The next.
If you know anybody, tell them to send that letter, send them in.
Yeah, I don't know if I I don't know if I'd make the, uh, physical requirements anymore. Um.
It's still open for another week, send them in.
Next up is a, again, you, Mike, with a, uh, proposed policy change for, uh, bias-free professional policing policy. Um, we've got copies of the old policy and the new policy, why don't you give us a a quick update? And, uh, on on the new one and why we should be changing it?
Okay, uh, so this is going in line with, uh, what the reform is, re- um, and not actually, not only that, but to make us a better police department. Uh, what reviewing our policies, as I stated that I was going to be doing, uh, this one is one that is very important, uh, they all are. But it will replace an existing policy of, uh, bias-based bias-based policing and will replace the, uh, the policy with a more comprehensive one. Uh, that's, the new one will hold the officers who interact with the public in a manner that is not within the rules and regulations of the Stowe Police Department. Um, and not within Massachusetts law, more accountable. The policy also, the new policy also requires officers to be trained further and to continue their training in bias-based policing. Um, I've sent, uh, the officers to bear and impartial policing, uh, through run through the municipal police training com- uh, committee. Uh, all but two full-time officers have gone, uh, and it's just the scheduling, these classes fill up very, very fast. Um, the this policy also, um, um. Again, it just brings us in line with what the, uh, Reform Act is and I'm, I could go in and read all the new eleven pages, but I just wanna hit on uh, an important point that, uh, a part of it makes, uh, uh, part of the new law states that, uh, everyone is entitled, uh, as a civil right to have a bias, uh, free professional policing and um, so this will hold officers, uh, definitely more accountable and it also gives a a process to if we do get, uh, complaints filed against us, what happens, what what happens with those complaints? And how it goes to what's created to post for their investigation and how we will, um, report any violation uh, to that oversight, um, to that oversight board. Also, if there is a incident and the officer is found to be, um, policing uh, with bias, that they can be decertified as a police officer, which is, once you lose your dis- once you lose your certification as an officer, you can no longer work uh anywhere as an officer. So this will hold all of the, uh, the officers that we have more accountable, um, on how we interact with, uh, our, uh, our community, not only our community that lives here, but our guests that come in from outside and also how we respond to other communities as well, um, within, uh, our mutual aid agreements and how we, um, in any sort of, uh, interaction, whether it's within, like I said, within us, our community or outside of it, so, in our professional, uh, capacity. Any questions?
Questions from anyone? I thought it was well done, myself. Um, and, uh, understand why you're doing it.
I think it was good.
Questions, comments from anybody?
Nope, thank you again for moving us forward.
All right. In that case, I am, uh, happy to take a motion.
Uh, Mr. Chair, I move that the selection vote approved the updated police policy on bias-free professional policing as presented by Chief Michael Solisi.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I see Megan and Courtney raising, I mean, Ellen and Courtney raising their hands. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Mike.
Thank you, guys, thank you.
You can go home now.
Yep.
No, no, we wanna talk to you about COVID. Just kidding.
I'll stay on if you want me to.
No, 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 no.
All right, thank you.
Good night.
Good night.
Um, next we have a letter that, uh, Denise has been working on with, uh, surrounding towns requesting that, uh, the board endorse setting up a, um, a regional COVID vaccination site. Um, and Denise, I will let you take it away.
Yeah, so quite candidly, I don't know that this is gonna do anything. Um, we as the sixteen communities have now sent two letters on behalf of the town managers and town administrators. Uh, we felt the next logical step was to have our respective boards vote to support the initiative and it's just one more thing that we can send along to the state. Uh, we have the legislative support, they have voiced their support for us over and over. Again, we figured it can't hurt, so we'll we'll move forward and see if we can, um, add the sixteen select boards to our, um, pack it when we send it into the governor, so. It's just a vote to say that we support the sixteen communities, um, of the Neshoba Valley. Um, that there's an inadequate amount of COVID vaccines to meet the needs. Um, that the Commonwealth is seeking to administer vaccines through larger sites and not regional sites, especially in northwest northwest Middlesex County and North Worcester County. Um, and that we ask that the administration work with our sixteen communities to fulfill a geographic inequity.
Anybody have any comments or questions about that?
No.
I think it's pretty self-explanatory.
There's no pharmacies in any of these towns that have vaccine?
There are pharmacies, um, but there's still, it's few and far between and and to get an appointment is still very limited.
Oh, okay, 'cause there's a sentence on page two that seems to say, reality is that there are currently no pharmacies or other retail locations.
But I think it was written two weeks ago before they opened it up, 'cause I had the same note and but it's the way that the, I mean, they've been writing these letters for a month.
Yes.
For being honest.
Every time we send the letters, it can change the next day.
Every time you send it, something changes, right, so.
Yes.
Okay.
Um, I just wanna say thank you to you, Denise, and to all of the town administrators and managers, um, of these sixteen communities because
Yes.
Um, it is beyond me that we are in this position in this area. Um, and I'm really hoping that, um, I'm hoping that tides will change soon. Even if this is not what does it, um, I'm hopeful that, um, you know, our our state reps, um, also I know are banging the drums, so I'm grateful to them as well.
And so much for the idea that you just have to raise your hand and make it stink and you get a.
Right, right.
Yep.
Months.
Yep.
So.
Motion?
That being said, I'm happy to take a motion.
Uh, Mr. Chair, I move that the selection vote to support the cooperative work of regional stakeholders to establish a professional regional vaccination site in the Neshoba Valley to address geographic inequity.
Second.
All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Ellen and Megan are aye.
Aye.
All right.
And Courtney.
No, I'm sorry.
It's getting late.
It's getting late. My apologies.
It's fine.
Um, town administrators report?
I will go quickly. Um, so at this time, we have decided to move forward with a modified and downsized Camp Stowe. Uh, we have scaled it back to fifty campers with proper precautions, excuse me, for social distancing and COVID. Uh, Laura is working with the Board of Health and the state on guidelines so that we can at least do something and get some kids out and active this summer. Um, when we spoke this morning, she said almost all the fifty slots were filled, so, um, we'll be able to do something. She's still working on plans for the beach, um, she's hoping to have something to her next committee meeting and then she will let me know what they're thinking of for the beach for the summer. Um, the online permitting system for the building department is looking to be, uh, go live in the next few weeks. Uh, right now, they're targeting April first is the live date. Uh, once that gets up and running, we will then work to get annual licensing and permitting for other departments such as the Board of Health, the Fire Department, the Town Clerk and the Selectmen's Office, uh, with the grant that I obtained for about forty thousand dollars to get all of those um, going. So we're gonna get the building department online first and then we'll start looking at the other, uh, departments. Uh just to let you all know, I have been, not really appointed, selected uh to represent the three communities uh in collective bargaining with the school unions, um so I start that on Thursday of this week. Uh we are meeting with the teachers union, um so I'm not sure where that stands, we have not gotten any proposals or any drafts, um we, they received a one-year contract last year to get through COVID. Um and speaking with the superintendent, she was considering offering another one year or asking us to offer one year. Um I'm not sure where that will fall, but we are at, meeting at six o'clock on Thursday as a unit first and then we will meet with the uni- the full union after that. Um, not sure how involved you all have been in the past with audit reports, uh I've got the draft audit reports today for fiscal twenty, um and we'll be working to clear up the current year issues and the prior, and the prior year's unresolved matters. Um, we don't have any material weaknesses, which is great, uh we do have some significant deficiencies that we will be working on. And just some overall um control, internal control matters, um obviously, most of them pertain to the financial departments. Uh some basic ones that I was able to implement today, um you know, having me sign off on department heads looking for reimbursement for purchases instead of having them sign their own things. Some, some minor stuff like that, but um hopefully, we got draft financials today as well, so Julie, the town accountant, was going through those, she had some questions on some of their entries. Uh but that should be wrapped up, we should have final reports on that soon. Um again, I don't know if the board, if the auditors normally come before the board and present their audit findings, I would recommend that. I think it's healthy to have you all hear their findings and see, uh you know, what they have found and how our financials in, are in from an independent party. Um so once we have that, I will schedule them for just a brief discussion so that you can see and ask any questions you may have of the auditors. Uh for those of you who don't know, um plantation and Stowe elderly housing have reached a settlement uh with the abutters, so um as of now, it will be between Stowe elderly housing and DEP on the next steps to permit the water filtration. Um so as of right now, we are sort of out of that mix and uh the abutters certainly can appeal the DEP permit. Uh but that would be again between S D H C and the DEP directly. Um, as of my call today with the governor's office, they have stated that thirteen percent of all eligible Massachusetts residents are now fully vaccinated. Um, they were listing the numbers on folks that have had their first vaccine, but I focused on the fully vaccinated. Um they've talked about the federal relief coming down. I'm not entirely sure how much we will be getting or they're not sure yet on a federal level of the purposes of it. Um but is expected to hit in about ninety days, they expect the House to finalize it tomorrow and then it will be signed into law. And the state will receive their funds within thirty days and then it will take sixty days to roll it out to the municipalities. These new funds in the bill right now are scheduled to cover COVID-related expenses through the end of twenty twenty four. Uh so that will give us plenty of time to make some changes if we need to continue to make changes. They've talked about early indications that the funds could be used for revenue replacement, so for communities or school districts that are having issues with revenue. We're not in that situation, um but for some, you know, cities that are having issues, they could certainly use some of that. They've often talked about allowing infrastructure items under this bill. Again, I haven't seen it, the state has not seen it, um they were actually getting updates as we were on our call today, so once we get that final version, um I can have more information for you on what that fund, those funds will entail. Uh we have not spent the first round of funding that we received, um so I don't know that we'll need additional funding, but we'll see what happens. Um, the state is still working on ways to help folks sixty-five and older get vaccinated. Uh they have realized that now that vaccinations are open to teachers and other categories, the spots are being taken immediately. Um, so they are trying to find ways to work with either communities, work with fire departments, work with some type of regional initiative to get uh that demographics vaccinated. Um, I wanna say only one-third of the population over sixty-five has been vaccinated, so they are, they do recognize that that is um a concern. And then uh my final issue, it's something you all can think about, um when I sent out the packet this week, one of the board members was not comfortable receiving the full unredacted file because there were social security numbers and bank account information pertaining to the license. Um, my feeling was, as the local license authority, you should see all of that information, you should see the full packet, however, it was redacted for the website. And should anyone request a copy of the packet, it is covered under the privacy laws, so it would not be released. But I wanted to know how the board feels, and again, we can certainly discuss this at another time, but um how the board feels about getting that personal information on applicants of licenses.
Can I, I think it was my email.
It was not, well, that's okay, you had similar concerns.
Um, I would be fine with um having it available here, uh paper copy for us to come and review if we wanted to look at, I, that's my preference. Um just because there are like birth certificates and whatever and I wouldn't want to be inadvertently responsible for I would forward the entire unredacted packet onto somebody, but I don't want that responsibility. So if it lived here in this building, I would feel a little more comfortable, but that's my two cents.
I totally agree, I, I think it's, you know, it, it makes me really, especially you see people's financial information, I mean, there's so much personal stuff in it that it just makes me nervous that it's, I mean, I'm grateful that you're making sure it's redacted, but uh, but I think I to have it in front of us, you know, at the, at the office, if we really wanted to see all those things, I think that would be absolutely sufficient for me.
Okay.
Courtney?
Yeah, um I feel similarly, so I, I guess just to be clear, the portion of the packet that um contained the personal information would be um on file in the office. Um, I, I think I'm more comfortable with that.
Mm-hmm.
Thanks for bringing it up.
Certainly.
Yeah.
I think I get to almost the same place, but for a different reason. Um, I file stuff all the time and things get filed with me that have more personal information than this. It's all redacted, it's all available on websites, so the, the standard certainly seems to be in government, that redacted financial information is fine to post publicly. If, if I were to get it, I would want it to be redacted for the reason Megan just said, I would be afraid I would share it with someone, being an idiot. But for a completely different reason, I don't wanna get a two-hundred-page packet. So if there are things that, you know, if, if there are things that could legitimately just be here in the appendix
Hmm.
um that may or may not contain the financial information, but I would think they would, including, we used to get highway laborers' resumes.
Hmm, right.
And I was very uncomfortable with that, not just the personal information, but their entire work history, their personally, their addresses. Um if there could be a paper appendix, um you know, primarily from my uh point of view, just to reduce the electronic packet, I'd be in favor of that, if that makes sense.
And I, I, I agree, I don't have any particular need, want or desire to have the bank accounts. I know that some of the stuff is probably, from a regulatory standpoint, you've gotta collect it. On stuff like that, I'm more than happy to take your word that, or our executive assistants' word that the package has been complete and we can review it, you know, on, on demand, shall we say. I was actually thinking about it from the same standpoint that all of the receipts from the uh abutters lists. I, I had no need, want or desire to see all of those. But you know, to have the um confidence that it's been done right and uh you know, a one-liner saying we've, you know, all of the uh um abutters have been contacted, we have the receipts on file if you wanna see them, that's more than, more than enough for me, or, or enough for me, I should say.
So I will, for the, you know, for the next time we get one, I will include really just the basic application and not all their documents that support that.
Mm-hmm.
Uh I will still continue to go through and make sure they have complied with everything, um and then we'll just have um either the original or a copy here.
Mm-hmm.
You know, part of my concern was you're not all here in person anymore, so you're not, that's why the correspondence is all scanned, 'cause you won't see it if it's not included.
Right, right. Right.
Um.
Yep.
So I will, but I will certainly do that with applications going forward. And then.
So if it's, maybe we could discuss that at another time as necessary, but if it's not too much trouble, if you, if there was uh for instance, a substantial appendix to the packet, uh maybe a, just a brief uh note listing what the items in there, uh you know, like, like for the farm board liquor license, liquor license, um you know, various supporting documentation.
Sure.
Almost like a check, checklist.
There's a checklist, yeah.
There is a checklist, yeah.
And it, we, you know, that it is all available, yeah, I, I agree, because in the, in the past, we really didn't, we never saw that stuff, to my records.
Okay.
On most of it, we'd see the basic applications and things like that.
We saw things like that.
I saw it a few times.
We saw things like that, but um.
I don't want to.
But I, I remember saying the same thing maybe four years ago.
Yep.
When you got a highway.
Thank you for your thoroughness.
Yeah.
Yes.
But I don't need to know how tall and thin Andrew Martin is.
Right.
Uh well, you'll notice I did not include in the packet uh Dave Gogan's resume, because we've talked about resumes before, so I have it if any of you need to see it, but
Right.
Right. Yep.
I did not include the actual resume, 'cause then that, that is not covered by the Privacy Act, um so that would be um discoverable if someone requested it, but
I don't know.
The bank documents and things would be covered anyways.
Yeah.
But okay, I will do that going forward, um and that is it, if anyone, unless anyone has any questions on the other items I mentioned.
Everybody good? Alright, uh liaison reports, why don't we start with you today?
Given the lateness of the hour, um I will just say one thing, um Library Building Committee, we met with Kate Hogan um and had a good discussion about the possibility of state funding, which is uh less certain and more squishy than anyone would want. But here's my point, um this is the first time in the ten years I've been involved with the library building project that we've talked about that subject seriously. Um and this building committee seems to be taking seriously the idea of maximizing the current space in the current library before thinking about expanding the footprint of the building, whereas in previous iterations of this committee, it was a given that the, the footprint had to expand, so um these are all things to be uh optimistic about. That's it.
Megan?
Um, I have nothing to report.
Excellent. Courtney? And I was ha- I, I, I meant that. I'm getting tired too, Courtney?
Um, Unity Preservation Committee met last night and um voted on all of the projects before them to um uh and so they um voted to support um Stowe Acres, um the cane land, um the pickleball courts. And what am I forgetting, um?
Hall of Point, no, that's.
So the town hall was, um, they were not able to vote to fund the town hall because of lack of funds. Um and they will be sending a letter to our, um, to the Selectman's Office um offering that they can support the project for one point seven five million. Um, I've requested and we have it on the agenda that, the next meeting probably to discuss.
Yes, the letter came in today, so it was not in time to get on your agenda, I told CPC it would be on your next meeting's um schedule.
Um. Yes. Yep, got it. Um.
I assume Hall of Point was the other one?
Yes, it was, thank you.
I was just looking last time, yeah.
Um. Conservation Commission has um, has um confirmed the wetlands flags for Athens um lane, which is, uh they're looking at a, um I guess that's the first steps for a um potential large development. And um that is, I think, just about it for me, there's one more. Um, Ingaborg, former selectperson Ingaborg Hegman-Clark is um receiving the Worcester Business Journal's Hall of Fame Award. Um, this is a big deal, recognizing her lifetime contributions to advancing women in science and um protection of the region's natural resources, so. Ingaborg, you rock.
He absolutely is.
Yeah, absolutely.
Good for me.
Ellen?
Okay, I ask Courtney just a quick question, I heard, is, did Stowe Acres have two different items with CPC, was it just the one? I know they talked about different phases, but some are.
There are, yeah, there's different phases, so this year, um my understanding is that the request is for one point five million for a conservation restriction on the complete South Course. Um, which editorializing, I think, is a really good deal, it's um fair amount of land and, you know, so golf will be able to continue there. Um, there is an historic building as well, um but there's just some really not, there's nice connection to Glisendale and there's um some really sweeping vistas out on that, it's very, a certain amount of it is open to view from Randall Road and so, um uh that's perhaps the, the simpler of the two phases and the second one will be the North Course with its multi-part efforts to be determined.
Okay, so nothing's on the, on the north part this time, it's just the south, just the sea, or I thought there, I thought we heard last meeting that it was something on the north side, so I keep getting my north and south mixed, so, okay, um I'll have asked, I'll ask you questions offline about that, so, um, yeah, thank you. Um so in terms of mine, um most of my committees meet after today, um I actually was interested to hear about recreation, because we haven't had a meeting since November, so um which leads me to wonder, do we have job descriptions for what the committees can decide without their, or staff can decide without their commissions, 'cause I don't I, not that I'm saying that about this specifically, but it just sort of occurs to me, like, can something come to town meeting without the commission or the committee approving it, I'm, so um just something for future discussion, so, that's all for me.
Ellen, I'll look at the bylaws, most of the committees are spelled, are in the charter, most of them are spelled out in the charter. Um, but a lot of the committees are advisory only, so um we can talk about what, you know, the specific committees can and cannot do. Um, I don't know that anything has taken place, quite honestly, um in recreation over the last few months anyways, um other than probably Camp Stowe now that it's coming up.
Right, I, yeah, I, I, and thank you for pointing me to the charter, I can go look, I just, um, I just, I'm concerned about decisions around the lake and um I mean, whether it's Lake Boone or, I mean, um Pine Bluff or, or Camp for, you know, without some larger discussion with people that um might have concerns about it, so.
Do you have a meeting schedules, do you know?
Not that I know of.
Okay.
I, I might have missed it, I, you know, cemetery doesn't tell me until the day before either, so, you know, liaisons, we don't get much respect, so.
And I really don't have.
Kind of not the only one.
I'm, I'm good, so. Got two sets of minutes. Uh we have minutes from February twenty-third, twenty twenty-one.
Looked good to me.
They looked good to me too.
Fine day.
They're fine by me.
Okay, let's do it.
Mr. Chair, I move to accept the meeting minutes of the February twenty-three, twenty twenty-one meeting, open session meeting.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 And then we have minutes from uh Tuesday, February twenty-third, the executive session. Um and I believe that uh, and Denise, I'm sure will correct me if I'm wrong, that we can approve and release these.
Yes, you may, the contract was posted the next day, so all the information is already out there and available.
And I was good with that.
Aye, no motion?
Everybody good?
Mm-hmm.
Take a motion. Take a motion.
Chair, I move to accept the meeting minutes of February twenty-three, twenty twenty-one executive session and to release them to the public.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Manimus. Alright. Last thing is, are there any questions on anything in the correspondence?
So the thing from Linda is going on the next agenda, right?
Going
Yes, it is.
Okay.
Alright.
It's at, oh, three twenty-three.
Three twenty-three, yeah.
Maybe.
Yes. I told her she only needed two minutes, we could put it on tonight, but I knew we were gonna be here, and she'd like an actual, that's why, she'd like you to review it, so we can have a discussion on the twenty-third. Right.
And and will we also be discussing the audit advisory committee appointment? I I don't know, it seems like that was pressing for a while, but I don't know if it's um at this point, if it's pressing or if it was just we wanted to resolve it.
Oh, I think they have one, right?
No, so it is, um so the position is open. Um the prior candidate did re resign, so we've posted the position.
Yeah. Yeah.
Um I know Erica on the finance committee had a candidate in mind, uh they are meeting, we are meeting next Tuesday, so I believe they will be uh it's a joint appointment, but I assume they could also just make their recommendation to you instead of having a joint boards meeting. Um I know she's planning to have a candidate for that meeting, so it should be on your next agenda as well.
And I should have mentioned, I think we also, it was in here, we had at least one resignation on the council engine that hopefully will also be posted, so we can
Mm-hmm.
um apply the replacement soon.
Yep, I think um Phoebe was posting that last Friday. So that should be posted as well.
Alright. If there is nothing else to discuss, I will
Did you make that motion?
He he, yeah, he 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 made a motion to withdraw.
So I'm second again, second.
Oh, aye, aye. All in favor?
We have some discussion? No.
Yeah. No, I'd like to stay for a while.
And And
Everybody, thank you.
Good night.
Good night, everyone.
Night, everybody.
Good night.
Good night.